If you're okay running the...
You want me to run?
No, 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 the mayor's gonna quit. But I'm gonna plug it into your computer, and the slides will be on your computer. Is that a problem?
I... no, I don't think it's a problem. I'm not certain that it's gonna work, but it's not a problem.
Why shouldn't it?
I don't know.
I think it will.
Okay.
Uh, I will get you the slides.
Yeah, okay. I need one of these. Where'd you get that?
Over there.
Oh.
The wood.
Oh, all right, I didn't realize that. Well, that was a great thing as well. Do you have another one to keep for? No, I do not. No.
No, that's not. Uh, you could have a lot more.
Okay, right, right before you hit the door.
Um, do you have any, any, do you have certain things? Let's just try this.
I have the school slides.
Can you try and click, uh, present?
Yep. Hold on, let me try something else. Let me try.
Denise is sending the slides to you.
All right, let me try. It's screen two, is that what I mean? If I do screen.
Uh, all right, I'm gonna get my laptop.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Can I join this Zoom?
Yep, I'll send it to you right now. No, I'll send you the Zoom link. What's wrong with you? I'm sorry, now I'm... Call for clams. Great, I think I'm ready. QR. Oh, interesting. Uh, just wait, do you want to get that? Or no, you wanna get out of the way? In case she leaves? Yeah? Okay. So, yeah, so why don't we do it first then? Just say, you know, I'm gonna want to, um, hold my right up as a president to take up a late item out of order, and we'll do that. Yep? I sent you the link to join.
You or?
No, 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 you wanted to join the Zoom, right? I just, sorry, I just emailed it to you. Cause it like does it automat- it like emails it. Cause it's a panelist link, it's not a, it's not an attendee link. I also don't know how I would thank you. Not yet, that's funny, but.
Have you had, you're gonna do for a fun answer? That's when you know it's good night.
The council after dark.
No, please no.
Oh yes, I have it, yeah, I have it already. Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. So where do I need to sit up? I'm gonna have to log in with the panelists on the screen. So they're gonna move that table over, so y'all will be just sitting at that table? Is the plan, that's what DPW told me. So yeah, you just pop up your laptop like Mike is doing right now, cause he's pulling up the mayor's slides. I sent you the panelist link. Okay? I hope you got that, if not, let me know, okay? And then yeah, when you log in, you can just share and you can... You go through it, yeah. Thank you. Okay? You have to get it. You wanna try it? Okay.
Oh yeah. Did it.
All right.
All right, and I hope the mayor, she's here.
I am ready. Hi, thank you. I like this color. I was just looking up the PR videos like that, and I didn't order them, and I was like, ah, gee. But now that I see it, I might go pull the trigger. I am ready.
Welcome everybody. This special meeting of the city council has been called by the mayor solely for the presentation of the proposed FY 2024 municipal and enterprise fund budgets with related appropriations, transfers, and other financial items. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation, and we will post an audio recording, audio/video recording transcript of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Um, I have an announcement about interpretation. Uh, we are providing interpretation in Spanish and Portuguese tonight. If anyone, uh, needs interpretation, please visit the interpretation table to get a headset that is located right outside these doors. Um, and with that, clerk, could you please call the roll?
And this is a roll call. Councilor McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Scott.
Present.
Councilor Trezzo.
Present.
Councilor Klingon.
Present.
Councilor Wilson.
Present.
Councilor Burnley.
Present.
Councilor Gomez-McCord.
Present.
Councilor Kelly.
Present.
Councilor Penny Nufeld.
Present.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Here.
With all councilors present, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Let it be known that pursuant to our rule thirty-two, this council salutes the flag and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. Um, I would like to use my privilege as the president to waive the rules to take a late item out of order. Um, madam clerk, if you would please call that item.
This is a resolution by Councilor Ewan Campan and the entire council that this council hereby welcomes Isaac Nufeld Paskin to Somerville, extends its best wishes to his proud parents, and looks forward to Isaac's bright future in Somerville.
Welcome, Isaac. Thank you all very much. Uh, next item, please.
And item seven point one is a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of three hundred and nineteen million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars to fund the fiscal year 2024 general fund operating budget.
Is there any discussion on the motion? No, just kidding. Uh, I believe this brings us to the presentation of the mayor. We are honored to be joined today by much of city staff and by Mayor Ballantyne, and we're looking forward to your presentation, please.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. President, for, for having me here, uh, today. I just wanted to start off, as some of you might know, over at the Winter Hill Community School, there was a fallen tile in the stairwell and some debris. So we've closed school tomorrow. It's the last option. We don't, um, easily recommend closing schools. We wanna be cautious, we wanna think of the safety of our children, and we will be sharing more information uh, as the weekend and the next days proceed. So thank you. Um, good evening. So council president Ewan Campan, esteemed colleagues in the city council, school committee members, acting superintendent of schools Jeff Curly, and I'd like to welcome our new superintendent of schools, Dr. Ruben Carmona, who will start on July one. Dr. Carmona, would you mind standing? Thank you. So I wanna thank the city council for this opportunity to share an overview of my administration's proposed... I suppose I, oops. Proposed fiscal year FY twenty-four budget for the diligent work that you do on the budget each year. I'd also like to acknowledge, uh, the city staff who are here this evening and department heads. Uh, and I would just ask that you, you please rise just so we can, everybody can see some of you have never met for the fir- you know, in person. So I'd really like it if city staff could just, uh, stand. I just... We also have community members and staff who are viewing online, and I just wanna thank everybody for their hard work and their dedication for our community. As we go through the budget overview tonight and the details in the coming days, you'll find investments and priorities that should be familiar to you. That's because this budget is based on the community's shared goals, values, and ideas. I've built my administrations on the principles of equity, inclusive government, and progress for all. Throughout the year, city staff and I hear and study the inputs, concerns, ideas that come from residents and community members as well as each of you, our city counselors. The feedback comes via public here, uh, public meetings, council discussions, emails, sidewalk conversations, as well as via task force working groups and our calls, uh, in participatory budgeting ideas. We also study the data, such as survey results, the content of more than a hundred thousand 311 requests we get per year. And I want our community to know we are listening. We bring community input right into the policy discussion program development and also into budget discussions. And this year is no different. So thank you, everyone, for your input. It may take a little bit longer and sometimes it gets messy, but we get better decisions and more voices and viewpoints considered. The priorities you've shared are balanced and reflected at best as possible in this budget. As a result, this budget invests in both quality core services like roads, parks, waste management, as well as in communities' big ideas and goals for progress on so many fronts like affordable housing, climate action, and social services. It is a reflection of the success we can achieve by sharing ideas and working together. In addition to honoring community input, we also built this budget with much-needed investment that no one thinks to ask for. I've never heard a resident ask that we hire a new auditing clerk to process bills or a new procurement analyst to help DPW manage its many critical contracts. But if we are to deliver on the services and strive for the goals desired by our community, we must also have the staff and pay for the resources needed to get the job done. And we must also meet our financial obligations ranging from debt service and pension payments to, to required service payments to the state, like the MDTA. So you will find this is a budget that funds core services, our community priorities, our obligations, and efforts to advance our community's ambitious goals for progress and the staff and resources needed to get the job done. And with that, I'm pleased to present our FY twenty-four annual budget. In total, the operating expenses, investments, obligations funded in this year's budget total three hundred and thirty-seven point four million dollars. As we talk about what we are investing in FY twenty-four, it's important to understand how we fund the budget. This city has a diverse range of revenue sources, from state revenue given to us by the Commonwealth to license and permit fees, local hotel and restaurant taxes and excise taxes. As you can see from the green on this, uh, slide, the largest share of our revenue comes from local property taxes, which include both residential property and commercial property. But fortunately for residents, our community has been working to grow the commercial property tax by design in Somerville. And this is what it looks like. In the last five years, we've added record commercial property values which helped the city to fund programs and services. Notice the orange bars. That's the commercial growth that our sovereign vision plan envisioned when residents got together to chart the path that would allow us to invest more in our community. The bar for 2024 is a projection, is projected. That has brought in revenue streams that allows us to continue to invest without adding burden to our residents. You don't see this in every community. In fact, Somerville had the third most gross, new growth in the Commonwealth in the last fiscal year. The biggest impact we can have on being able to invest more in our people who live here now is bringing in new commercial revenue. Appropriately zoned, it diversifies our revenue stream, it creates jobs for people, and it allows us to do more for our community, like build a Somerville High School, like open an Office of Housing Stability and an Office of Racial and Social Justice. Last year, for my administration's first budget, together with this council, we established a foundation for progress on three core pillars and a central value. The first pillar was directing resources to continue and strengthen Somerville's delivery of strong fiscal management. Next, we focused on delivering core services. And third, because this is Somerville, a community that dreams big and where people have compassion for one another, it also meant making key investments in ambitious goals and ideas for progress that this city has in a wide range of areas. Finally, we overlaid a new central approach. With the support of this council, the FY twenty-three budget began the work of anchoring the equity at the core of all our efforts. Since we've met last year, we've been hard at work delivering on all four of those goals. I won't read this whole slide, but a few highlights of achievement last year in, in last year's budget, um, have happened. We've completed and renovated the Healy Schoolyard. It's fabulous. If you haven't seen it, really, it's worth checking out. We've laid the groundwork to launch the city's first municipal voucher program and invested tens of millions in affordable housing projects initiatives and supports to prevent displacement. We've listened to what our youth wanted and opened two teen centers that will ex- have expanded programming under this budget. They wanted one in the east and the west so they could walk to it in addition to, uh, a teen room that we have at the library. We planted a record number of trees, installed a record number of safe street facilities to advance Vision Zero efforts to end traffic deaths and serious injuries on roads, and we expanded road and control with our Smart Box pilot. The list goes on in, on this slide, and it's just a sampling now. With council support in shaping and approving the budget, we delivered on the two pillars I mentioned, qua- quality core services and shared community goals for progress. And I'm really proud to share an update on the first pillar of strong fiscal management as well. On May fifteenth, thanks to good governments, the City of Somerville was awarded the highest long-term debt rating, AAA. And this is a huge deal, it's a big deal. After reviewing our current and historical fiscal data and meeting with me last year and this year to discuss our current approach to financial management, Standard and Poor's global rating raised Somerville to a AAA rating. That signals to the financial world that the city is financially stable and credit-worthy. This is important for residents. The higher our bond rating, the lower the city's borrowing cost, which means critical investments such as a major school, road, sewer projects will be more affordable for the city going forward. Again, that reduces the costs while still allowing the city to fund needed investments in vital infrastructure. For example, directly after we got the new rating, we were able to lower the proposed water and sewer rates without threatening funding of major needed systems repairs and upgrades. Our AAA bond rating reflects more than twenty years of prudent financial management and strong economic growth and commitment to fiscal responsibility from both the current and the previous mayoral administrations. I want to extend my deepest thanks to for- former mayor Joe Curtitone for laying such a robust financial groundwork. City auditor Ed Bean for his exceptional, exceptional fiscal management and leadership, as well as every one of the city's dedicated staff members who worked hard, helped us reach this achievement. And every counselor over the years who voted in support of efforts to maintain strong financial health, economic growth, and sound fiscal management of our city. Our AAA bond rating provides a strong foundation for our community's future. My administration will continue to prioritize fiscal responsibility and investment in projects that build progress for all. Sometimes, this means we'll be cautious. Other times, we may take calculated risks, but we'll do it together. Yep. Thank you. With that goal in mind, our foundation set and with our shared goals centered, our proposed FY twenty-four budget focuses on new investments in three main areas: our people, places, and planet, to create a thriving, more equitable Somerville. By people, we mean investments in our community members to help achieve progress for all through direct services, supports, and opportunity. By places, we mean our fiscal spaces like schools and city buildings, parks, open spaces, streetscapes, and the infrastructure and underground services that keep our city functioning. By planet, we mean doing our part to make vital investments in climate action, sustainability, pollution control, habitats and trees, and flood mitigation, green infrastructure, and more. The final piece of the pyramid is staff and resources, our foundation. To accelerate our progress and better meet the needs of our community, we must scale our organization, which means we must strategically add staff where needed and provide the operating resources they need. We cannot install more safety, traffic safety measures without enough traffic engineering capacity. To better maintain, maintenance of our schools, we need the staffing and operating budget to oversee upgrades, perform them, and pay for them. If we want to key, want key priorities like affordable housing and core services like 311 constituent services to function well, we also need to invest in the less exciting sounding jobs like deputies, project managers, legal counsel, and coordinators who work behind the scenes to ensure our work gets done. This graph offers a quick overview on how expenditures are distributed. As you can see, the largest category is green. It's personal services. That's the staff who do the work and the pension payments to the staff who used to do the work. As our budget team likes to say, it is our job as a city to solve problems in Somerville, and our staff are how we achieve that. The next larger, largest area is ordinary maintenance. That's the operating budget to pay for all the tools and resources we need for salt on the roads in the winter, computers for staff to fund, for HVAC repair and replacement in our buildings. Our people. The proposed investments in our community members cover a wide, wide range of needs and priorities. Last year's school budget included a historic ten percent increase, which was very important to me. It's a, it's our responsibility to ensure that our youth have all the resources and supports they need to learn, thrive, and prepare for successful lives. This year's school budget follows with another significant increase of almost eight percent that includes five hundred thousand to expand needed out-of-school time programming. I also worked with the schools on a three-year budget plan. The goal was to ensure we were planning a careful transition from Esser funds, which are federal pandemic funds given for a limited time to the schools. We are planning ahead to avoid what people are referring to as the Esser Cliff. As the Esser expires, we are planning for how to absorb the most critical investments over the long haul. After the success of the two pi- uh, two pilots for the teen centers we opened last year, we also are proposing funds and staffing to expand their pro- programming. Hundreds of youth are regularly gathered at these centers for learning, recreation, food, connection, in a safe environment. And we are also investing in a new wraparound service manager. The manager will connect our families with needs, supports, and social services. Preventing displacement and taking on the housing crisis is always at the forefront of our efforts. Much of the major work occurs outside the budget with investments in affordable housing, such as the thirty-seven million committed this past year. The daily work of our Housing and Economic Development staff funded in this budget will continue our efforts to prevent displacement. New for this year are proposed investments in two new staff for our Office of Housing Stability to better reach and serve our residents. We are also proposing a new Housing Council legal position in the Housing Division to help advance that work. Increased food security services are also vital need to our most vulnerable residents. This budget proposes a new food access coordinator to advance efforts to keep Somerville residents from going hungry. Our artists and makers ke- keep our community culturally enriched, support our local economy, and make us the vibrant community that we are. We are proposing a permanent, to permanently fund an Arts Council Arts Space Coordinator who will coordinate existing city arts spaces, open a new dance and movement facility. I'm also excited that the coordinator will explore the possibilities of new uses of our existing city and school spaces. Locations such as the Somerville High School Auditorium could serve as an arts and culture venue. This investment will allow us to explore new ways these, uh, in these city locations that can serve our community. Access to the wealth of resources at our public libraries is also a core quality of life benefits for our residents. This budget funds a pilot to the East Branch Library to expand summer Sunday hours. This will offer a cool res bed to the place of enrichment during the warm season. We are also propose, proposing a new ADA field coordinator to oversee the American Disabilities Act's compliance for a built environment citywide. That includes buildings, sidewalks, crosswalks, and public spaces. To support lifelong learning, we're proposing to permanently fund two Council on Aging positions to move one from half-time to full-time. We've added more funding to the Council on Aging's technology... We've added more funding to the Council on Aging's technology, health, wellness programs, and we've added a program service coordinator in the Recreation Department. Among other duties, the coordinator will advance plans to create more recreational programs for older residents. We're also proposing two new jail diversion clinicians in the civilian-staffed CORE Division of the Police Department. CORE stands for Community Outreach Help and Recovery. The goal of the diversion program is to keep people out of the legal system and prevent incarceration. Diversion aims to address the root causes of community instability such as food, housing, and job insecurity, or substance misuse, and lack of mental health services. Through follow-up and aftercare, the clinicians will provide access to supports. Language justice, information access, and language access remain top priorities. This budget proposes a new language justice coordinator to advance our language access plan, a communication coordinator to support overall information access, and increased funding for American Sign Language, CART Live captioning, Braille, and City TV closed captioning. We also propose a permanently funding the Director of Emergency Management, adding a deputy, and adding a new emergency public information officer to support community-wide safety during emergencies and crises. So now a mobile city hall. If we're going to keep equity at the center of our efforts, we must expand our efforts to meet people where they are. This budget starts what we plan to be a larger and longer-term effort to bring City Hall into our neighborhoods with mobile services. Specifically, we are proposing a new team of community health workers, the permanent funding and expansion of our multilegal equity support team, which will assist all departments with growing services and information access. And with grant funds, we will hire a social worker to provide outreach and supports in our library. These three initiatives will support better health outcomes, better connect residents to and assist them with applying for support services, and share the broad array of city information face-to-face in our squares, neighborhoods, teen and senior centers, and parks. Our equity support team is staffed by both teen and adult team members, including a role designated for a member of public housing and is multilingual. This is a way we will work to be sure no one is left behind. Our places. Our schools, our buildings, our parks, our playgrounds, and squares are not just resources and amenities; they are our treasure and our responsibility. The infrastructure and the underground services we rely on, like water and sewer, must not be forgotten. This budget seeks not only to accelerate investments in our tree canopy, mobility improvements, roadways, it aims to strengthen our efforts to tackle legacy infrastructure challenges. I'll speak more to that in a moment, but I do want to highlight proposed funding for a Milwaukee Forest project behind the high school, an updated citywide tree inventory, as well as expansion of our Smart Box rodent control. Yes, rodents are part of our places. A new traffic engineer to support road safety improvements, and funding to pave the eastern end of Highland Ave, which has long been in disrepair and came up repeatedly, repeatedly as a suggestion from participatory budgeting. As for our legacy infrastructure challenges, we have an aging water and sewer system under our streets, numerous old buildings in need of significant repair. And we have a new, a network of roads only built for cars and not for people on foot or bikes who need to be kept safe. Like much of the country, our infrastructure and buildings have suffered from decades of underinvestment and deferred maintenance. And we cannot only look backwards at our legacy challenges. We now must include planning for climate resiliency and sustainability. Reducing flooding impacts through gray and green infrastructure, for example, is essential to helping protect our homes and our businesses. My administration is committed to breaking this mold of underinvestment in renovation, repair, and deferred maintenance. But it'll take time and strong fiscal management to right the ship. So we are working to propose, with purpose to tackle, these issues through strategic and sustained investment and planning. We are taking on the monumental challenge via two core approaches: strategic planning and investment, and a new approach to maintenance. This budget addresses legacy challenges and prepares for the future by supporting the delivery of healthy, sustainable facilities, expanding systems from proactive maintenance. On the planning side, we've recently undertaken a comprehensive effort to carefully chart out new investments in our schools, our fire station, our below-ground services, our city buildings, and more. Our comprehensive approach to capital planning helped us earn that AAA bond rating, by the way. While we tackle the problems of the past and plan for the future, the city is also creating new protocols for how to make much-needed improvements right now. For one, our capital projects team is currently stress-testing equipment and assessing vulnerabilities, starting with our schools. Somerville hasn't been doing this for the past 20 years. We started this with the FY23 budget, just in the last year, and we are committed to increasing systems monitoring and replacement in the FY24 budget. To right the ship, we need increased investments in maintenance, asset management, and overall capacity at the Department of Public Works. We are thus proposing a new DPW positions, four new DPW positions, a new building systems manager, a new DPW procurement analyst, a new DPW Deputy Director of Finance and Administration, a new sanitation and hazardous material program manager. This budget also invests in new GIS manager to support infrastructure and asset management, the Department of Public Works, water and sewer, support of the asset management program, order tracking, and asset control. Funding to continue planning for building projects for the Brown and the Winter Hill School and city buildings. Funding for systems, stress testing for Argenziano and the Capuano Schools. The Winter Hill and the Brown were funded in FY23, and we will fund more schools in FY25. And a new 3-1-1 Deputy Director to help coordinate communication between 3-1-1 requests and the asset management tracking system. We also have assets that are unused, and it's our responsibility to ensure we are serving the community. This budget takes on the purpose by funding community process to find new uses for and plan the disposition of two vacant city-owned buildings. They include 24 Cross Street East in East Somerville and 45 College Ave in West Somerville. With community input, we will workshop potential new nonprofit uses with the goal of finding nonprofits, to take on spaces, and possibly developers to partner with them to renovate. The intention is to sign the buildings over to nonprofits to support services that benefit the community. We, as a municipality, have the power and responsibility to protect our local environment and to take action to help curb climate change. Climate change is no longer a far-off crisis that we're buckling up for; it's here; it's an emergency. My first week in office as mayor, I raised the carbon-neutral goals; Somerville is now aiming for carbon-negative, not just carbon-neutral by 2050. And we, with the council, passed a budget last year with unprecedented investments in sustainability initiatives. This year, we're proposing a new sustainability and resiliency coordinator to support citywide resiliency and building decarbonization efforts, and co-chair a new resiliency task force. Funding of the first-of-its-kind pilot project with Eversource to bridge the gap in electric capacity connection between the electric grid and buildings. Funding for a feasibility study to identify viable sites for vertical geothermal projects. Additional sustainability investments include $500,000 for year-long T-passes for all city and school staff for sustainable, equitable transit. This complements the ARPA-funded T programs for Somerville public school students, ERAP parents, guardians, as well as low-income residents. We propose funding for bike lane markings and other mobility improvements, including sustainable transit. We are continuing our commitment to the Combined Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan by Water and Sewer, and we will continue to fund Green Storm infrastructure development in our parks, byways, and infrastructure projects. Our final piece of the pyramid is staff and resources. And I cannot emphasize enough the importance of strategic investment in staffing capacity, recruitment, retention, as well as operating resources included in this budget. Staff and funding for the work we do is how we ensure we can provide efficient, high-quality services and work towards long-range goals each and every day. We are by no means a business, but sometimes it can be helpful to learn from businesses or nonprofits and their best practices. Imagine the city of Somerville as a growing nonprofit or business, where our product is focused on providing efficient and impactful constituent services among growing demand. To do that, it is universal best practice to scale up. Scaling the organization allows us to expand our operations and increase our capacity to handle larger volumes of work to better serve the Somerville community. For us, scaling up means investing in staff, providing sufficient budget to fund the work, and creating workplace that inspires our workers to stick with us and avoid costly vacancies that can derail services and progress. To that end, this budget proposes a new employee engagement and retention specialist to strengthen our recruitment, retention, and training of employees. We are also building capacity to guide projects to completion, plan long-term strategies, and promote cross-departmental efficiencies with key positions and management roles, including a new Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, a new part-time staff for the City Council, new part-time staff for the City Council, updates in information technology positions to better support CORE services, a new plumbing inspector in inspectional services, a new licensing operations manager in our city clerk's office. Scaling the organization includes further needed positions, including making permanent the additional 3-1-1 service representative funded by federal funds during the peak of the pandemic, increase capacity in our auditing through an additional accounts payable clerk, and a second budget analyst to focus on capital planning, a deputy assessor to support training in a modern, efficient assessing department, a program manager position in parking to take ownership of the city's curb management program. But it also includes operations and supplies, such as a critical $364,000 investment will support a suite of information technology upgrades that will increase efficiency, and 28% increase in HVAC system funding for DPW to both keep up the rising costs and expanded maintenance, replacement, and capacity of heating and cooling systems in our schools and city buildings. These investments, like others, will allow us to provide the community with service programs they expect and they deserve. Finally, there are numerous initiatives underway that are not reflected in this budget, thanks to alternative funding sources such as the American Rescue Plan Act or state or federal grants. This is just a sampling of the few. We have a universal basic income pilot in development, as well as a municipal housing voucher program. Our work towards opening an overdose prevention center has required navigating a range of hurdles, but it is advancing and will be funded. Our daytime engagement center for unhoused persons is open. We're designated funds to expand our winter overnight warming center for unsheltered. And we designated funding for a stabilization fund for persons facing emergency-related displacement such as fires. In summary, CORE services, as always, anchor the FY24 budget, and investments in our shared goals for progress make this budget uniquely Somerville. Our Somerville 2040 plan has hundreds, hundreds of ambitious and important goals created by the community working together. That's why, in addition to the basics like street lighting and trash pickup, we invest in housing programs, climate change action, Vision Zero, or a pollinator action plan, or so much more. This budget puts us on a path not only to continue to deliver quality of life, but to progress towards those big aspirational Somerville goals to achieve progress for all. So I'd like to briefly pause and take stock of how we got here. As I opened the presentation, I noted that we started with you, our community, our counselors, our school committee members, and the feedback you provide us all year. What is so striking about the input is that the shared values that emerged are so focused on the whole of supporting each and every one of us on addressing so many needs. In Somerville, it's about the "we," the "us," the village that it takes to get things done. In a time with so much division, rancor, we are fortunate to have a community focused not on creating problems, but solving them. Focused not on the "I" or the "me" or the "us" against them, but on the collective good. In Somerville, it's about the "we," the "us," the village that it takes to get things done. For this, I am grateful and proud, as we should all be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ballantyne. So as you all know, we're going to be spending many, many nights over the coming month. Chair of Finance Committee Counselor Wilson has shared a schedule for our meetings. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on the school budget, but it is traditional at this point to open it up for questions if there are general questions from the council.
Mr. President, I would like to acknowledge that some people came into the chamber a little bit later, so I want to acknowledge and welcome them here. I want to also, you know, acknowledge your concern and say that we are working in every way possible to, to help you and to make you feel that you're a part of this community and that you know that we're caring and working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. Seeing no questions, Counselor Burnley. Seeing no questions, Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, thank you for your presentation and for the incredible work that it takes to put together a budget. I know that about a million people in this room did a lot of work to make sure that all the departments had their chance to be heard, that budgets were increased, and I guess fat was cut where most appropriate. And we're going to talk about it a lot as -- let me slow down a little bit. We're going to talk about it a lot over the course of the next month. I am curious, there was a piece early on in the budget about how the executive office responded to counselor priorities that were put forward, I believe, last month, maybe two months ago. And there was a piece in there about alternative response that, in my view, missed the mark. This council spoke last year in March, as well as during budget season, as well as this year, about the need to create alternative emergency response that could interrupt the cycles of crises that our residents face, particularly those related to substance use disorder, or nonviolent conflicts, or mental health crises. And last year during budget season, we actually voted to fund some of those, an alternative emergency response program to help deal with that. That did not end up in last year's budget, and it appears not to appear in this year's budget. However, despite the conversation we had just recently that focused on this topic, there's an item in this budget that refers to those discussions, and it says that jail diversion is a response to what the council talked about. Having taken part in the conversation, there was no mention of jail diversion in that conversation, as far as I remember it. And I'm curious how the administration squares the addition of this money under the auspices of a council priority, when in fact, the council did not ask for that, and it does not meet the definition, or at least the community's definition, that we heard during this year and last year's public comment around alternative emergency response. Thank you.
I'm sorry, was the question --
I can clarify the question. Why is it that jail diversion was written in this budget as a response to council priorities when that is not what the council asked for? I have no problem with jail diversion. I'm a big fan of not sending people to jail. I've had many family members who've, I mean, in many different ways, lost their lives to our system of incarceration. But that was not the conversation that this council had. So I'm curious why that was fit in the box under something that the council supposedly wanted.
So, thank you. If I could just go back, is that we are still in the process. We're hoping that it'll be done, that we said we would do -- we're working with a consultant to do a staffing and operations analysis. We have not finished that. We are going to be coming back with the council, and hopefully soon, but that's not complete now. In terms of those positions, I believe the council discussed at the last budget meeting last year that CORE, Community Outreach and Health Recovery, under the leadership of Director Patty Contente, talked about the volume of work that she has going on. And the request, not only from some members of this council, but also from the Community Outreach Director, was to help, just be able to help, direct people away from jail to the services that they need. So it's the demand. And, you know, the -- well, I'll just --
Counselor Burnley?
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. That is a different interpretation than that conversation than I had, having participated in it. I remember specifically a vote that was taken to not direct that funding towards CORE, that was instead directed towards creating an alternative emergency response program. And it was not about jail diversion.
There's a lot of work, thank you, Counselor, through you, Mr. President, is there's a lot of work that needs to be done. It was a request to help redirect people. I would like to say, you know, at the same time, and I will, we're also -- we're also investing in our mobile city hall. That's with community health workers. I believe, you know, I'll let the HHS director talk about it when she comes up, but I believe that's three staff. Is that correct? Yeah, it's three staff. We also have equity support teams, and we're adding a position in the libraries for a social worker. So we are looking to bring essential services into the community. We are going to, we're piloting this. It is, we assume, going to have, you know, positive impacts, but it is trying to get into the community with community health workers, with equity team, with teens and adults, people speaking multi languages, and a social worker in our library. So that is what we've heard from our staff and from our community that is, would benefit our community. In terms, again, on the specifics of the clinicians that will be working with Patty Contente in the police department, it is a direct result of sheer volume there.
I have Counselor Pineda Newfield, but I saw some hands go up. Is it on this point? Counselor Pineda Newfield, go ahead.
My question's not on this point, so Counselor McLaughlin, go ahead.
I had a comment, but then I did want to talk about another point.
Let's go in order, then. Counselor Pineda Newfield?
I have a different question. Madam Mayor, thank you for this presentation and for the hard work of the city staff that went into this budget. I'll save my very specific questions for the hearings and conversations with department heads, but I'm curious, you know, this last fiscal year's budget was the first one you put together as mayor.
Yes.
You've obviously sat on this council and were involved on this side of the horseshoe. What did you learn in the last year around pulling together that budget that went into this year's budget? Either, you know, around goals that we weren't able to meet as a city, or ways in which you diverted funds to different areas that you thought had more needs? I was just sort of curious about the ways in which this year's budget might have reflected some lessons learned from the last year.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Pineda Newfield, it is our people, it's scaling the organization. We're growing. You will have seen over the past years that certain department heads have come to you and asked, "I need a deputy," or "I need a manager to manage the direct-line staff." We are a very flat organization. So that means you have the director, and then you have direct-line staff. Well, if a director has to manage 10 people, and that one person is out because they're focused on a particular issue, the director has to do the work. But we have all these ambitious plans, so how do you give the director the ability to move forward on all the goals that we want? So what have we learned is we're trying to find the gaps. You know, we're increasing our revenue, but we have to be able to scale the organization. And the department heads will talk about that in more detail. The other thing is our, you know, from last year, this year, I mean, I knew it, it's about the people. It's about our staff. Our staff are committed, they put in really long hours. I'll let HR talk about maybe how much unused vacation is happening because people are working so hard. But they, you need to think about the gaps on how to make the organization run quickly, responsibly to the constituents. And the way that the department heads have very thoughtfully and deliberately tried to address that is only going to benefit responses back to you and also responses to our constituents.
Thank you. May I ask one more question, Mr. President? Were there any ARPA-funded projects that we spent ARPA money on this year that is now getting absorbed into this next fiscal year's budget?
So thank you for the question. That's what we've worked with in terms of the school side. You know, we've absorbed, I think it was, was it 14 positions? Or it was about 14 positions onto the general fund out of 25, so we don't have, for this year. And next year, you know, we're going to look at that. So we're going through the same exercise on the city side. You, I guess, the budget director can talk more in detail when the budgets happen, but we have moved some positions onto the general fund because the services are needed. Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, to our mayor, I, for one, am very grateful to hear that you're funding the CORE program with essential services that I've been advocating for for several years, that this entire council supported in a resolution very recently. So I'm very grateful. I won't split hairs about what goes where. All I care about is who's getting helped. I do have a separate question, though. Inquiring minds want to know about rats. And I would love, I heard you mentioned some increases in resources, and if you could just tell me a little bit about that, so I can send out my live tweet and let the public know that we're addressing the rodent issue.
Yeah, I'm going to look the exact, we're adding one full, is it one full-time staff? Two staffs in that area? Let's see, is anybody here? Let me look. Budget Director, thank you. To that, we're also increasing the number of smart boxes, too.
That's the smart boxes and another environmental health coordinator, environmental manager.
Okay. So it's doubling the capacity on an environmental health coordinator, and then, yes, more smart boxes.
I'll save all my questions for later, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look forward to hearing further details about the budget. I'll ask, I want to ask a quick question about the school budget, because it relates to one aspect, the out-of-school aspect. I will be recusing myself for the school budget, as I have, because of conflict of interest of my family, but since this is really entirely separate, I'll ask you, and perhaps it could be responded to later if you don't have the answer right now, but thank you for including half a million dollars for out-of-school programming. This was a council priority, something that we've been talking about as a significant need. I suspect that that's probably a drop in the bucket, but it's an excellent start. It's a really meaningful investment in out-of-school programming. Having it in the school budget makes sense. My question is, do you know, or could you speak to the degree to which that will be used also for summer programming? Or is because it's in the school budget, will that be more focused on before school and after school? All of which we need. I'm just curious as to if, you know, it being in the school budget sort of keeps it out of the summer rec aspect? And then I have a follow-up.
So thank you very much for the question. I am happy to say Acting Superintendent Jeff Curley is presenting after me, so he can answer the specifics. What I would like to say is, on the city side, we have also added capacity, so they're supposed to work together. In terms of the detail of what we're adding to the city side, the Director Karen Carroll will talk about that, and our Parks and Rec Director Susan Yertz will talk about that on the city side. And Superintendent Curley can do the schools. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Through the President, so one additional question, and really a clarification, sort of in two parts, to what the good counselor-at-large, the Counselor from Ward 1 noted earlier. My recollection of our vote was that we decided to include in one vote increased staffing for, in terms of mental health services within CORE, and in terms of a non-armed response, hopefully, or potentially outside of CORE. So that was how I recall the one vote happening, so I think it's all under that bucket. I do agree that I don't remember jail diversion being a specific thing, not that I, I also think that that's a good way to invest some funding. So no argument there. But as to the outside-of-core aspect of it, I was interested to see, and you mentioned the community health, that was --
Community health workers.
Yeah, but it was in the announcement, it was phrased as a community health office or division, or there was something that made me at least think that it might be perhaps the beginnings of something within Health and Human Services that might, down the road, become a more robust, non-armed response option. And I wanted to ask if that's the thinking, if this is laying sort of the initial groundwork for something that, you know, if we can grow down the road, that might be the more specific type of thing that we've talked about, the alternative response type capacity.
Through you, Mr. President, thank you for the question. That is sort of the foundation of all of that. I would like to say, this is on the prevention side, too. In a former life, I used to be an executive director of a violence prevention nonprofit. The prevention is really impactful. In our HHS department, we have the Somerville Cares, somebody help me here with the exact name, but it's the prevention services of it. And it is impactful. It delivers results. So the idea behind this is that we're working on the prevention side and that it's laying the groundwork for it. And so coupled with that, once we get back, we're doing pieces of the pie. We're trying to be responsive on this. We do agree that there are better ways, and we can evolve as an organization, as a municipality, on how we interact with our residents.
Thank you. So just a quick clarification, and thank you for that. No argument, absolutely agree, that's a good place to invest funding. But just what I'm hearing is, at least for right now, the focus of that new office, that new capacity, is more on the prevention side and not necessarily specifically as the sort of framework for a future alternative response program. It might become that down the road, but right now, we're focused on prevention. That's the thinking.
We're focused on what? I didn't hear that. Excuse me. Through you, Mr. President.
No, I was just, through the President, I was saying, trying to sort of summarize what I thought I heard, which is that the funding that's in the budget right now, as you said, is focused on prevention, a very important and good way to spend money, but it's not necessarily specifically intended to be the groundwork or the framework for a future alternative response.
I would say that it is the beginning of it. It is the beginning of it.
Okay, I'll accept that. Thank you.
We have Counselor Wilson and Counselor Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor, thank you for being here tonight to kick off budget season. I want to thank you, your administration, for hearing my voice and my colleagues' voices with those calls for investing out-of-school time. Counselor Davis already asked a sort of a question like I was going to ask. I'm happy to save that for the schools' folks later on. I'd like to ask about your administration's plans for the tens and tens and tens of millions that we're looking at needing to appropriate from our free cash this year, and specifically, I'd like to advocate for significant spending on affordable housing creation on a large scale in our city.
So what I'll do is I'll ask Ed Bean to speak on that, because you've talked about the policy and --
Director Bean?
Thank you, Mr. President. So a few months ago, we presented the CIP for 2003, so a good portion of free cash, and all of it will be, some of it's been submitted tonight, and on the 8th, we'll be drawing down the free cash, and we'll go, we'll discuss that at that time, but CIP is the number-one priority. And we'll go, we'll discuss that at that time, but CIP is the number-one priority. Based on the free cash policy, there are certain reserves we have to appropriate for, and then there's going to be some discretionary funding as well, affordable housing. You mentioned that. So, we're planning at least a $3 million additional appropriation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But we'll certainly lay out this entire plan for you during these discussions.
Director, could you just repeat that number? Director, could you just repeat that number? I didn't quite catch it.
We had record free cash, Mr. President, this year, $39.6 million. And of course, we made some appropriations.
I'm sorry, I think you said a number about going to affordable housing. Did I just?
$3 million, at least, in addition to what we've already appropriated this particular year.
Can you say how much is in there?
I believe the, I believe the balance is somewhere around $18 million right now on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you. We have Counselor Scott Klingon, Kelly Gomez-Mocod.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, thank you, Madam Mayor, for the presentation. One thing flew past, I think, a little too quick for me to catch. Did I hear you say that there was a new food security coordinator or food security position being created?
Correct.
Maybe you can help me find where that position is. Where, I'm not able to find that. Where is that?
That is under HHS.
Oh, is that?
It works with the Director.
Oh, that's not the Food, Access, and Healthy Communities Director, is it?
I don't know the exact title.
All right, I'm just trying to understand because there was a Food, Access, and Healthy Communities Director added last year, but I don't see another position this year, so.
We'll follow up after.
All right, great, great.
Thank you.
I just, I want to make sure there's new resources going in here, and I know, of course, our Budget Manager is working overtime on making sure this is updated. Yeah, I did have, you know, and nobody would be surprised to know that I have a lot of questions for later on in this, but I guess, when we're looking at the housing stability and our housing divisions here, it's surprising to see basically flat spending in the ordinary maintenance for those departments, which is, you know, where the services get delivered. Is there another funding source that you are setting up for direct assistance from the Housing Stability Office?
So, the Office of Housing Stability, correct me if I, is primarily staff who deliver services. So, we're adding two other staff people to the existing staff. They connect people to resources.
No, I understand, but they're core programs. There are flex funds, housing search, tenant organizing.
They do not administer, those are done through contracts with CAS and the Somerville Housing Authority. Excuse me, Somerville Homeless Coalition.
Then perhaps this is something that needs to be updated in the budget because it's directly attributed to their ordinary maintenance charges in the department.
That's a lot of it is ARPA and Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We use a lot of resources.
Um.
I can take that if you want.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President, Mike Mastromoney, Budget Director for the City of Somerville. Through you to the Counselor from Ward 2. What's awesome about the Office of Housing Stability is their, is their staff who utilize resources from a number of different funding streams. Those include the American Rescue Plan Act, CDB Jeep, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, there's multiple resources available to this group. One example, I think that the Mayor referenced, was the Municipal Housing Voucher Program, the MVP program, is something that doesn't use general fund resources, so it wouldn't be shown on there. This is sort of a general point that I'm making, that I can make. You know, the general fund budget is one piece of the pie of the budget of the City of Somerville. I think if we had an all-funds budget, it could probably fill this room. You know, there's a lot of work that goes on in all the departments in the city, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, but thank you. That's basically what I was trying to get at there. I guess I had another question, just in terms of overall priorities. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about inspectional services and the important role they have in the city when it comes to enforcement, and honestly, just our residents' experiences of what it's like to try to get things done in the city. And I'll admit, I was shocked to see their budget actually completely flat this year.
Which department?
Inspection Services.
Yeah, Inspection Services. We've added some staff to them, and I will let the Director and Tanavika speak to his thoughtful plan there.
All right, I think I'm going to need some, probably more detail when we get into it, about how we add staff to the department and actually cut its personal services budget, but I'm sure we'll get to it. Mr. President, my only last question is, perhaps more relevant to the capital improvement plan, but, you know, we just got, as you recognized at the start of the meeting, this news about the Winter Hill School. And as you said, you're going to be working on this over the weekend. I would just encourage you to please be prepared to be agile and readjust some priorities in the capital improvement plan. The MSBA grant may not be a time-effective way out of this particular problem, so I'm sure we'll talk about that more as the budget goes on as well. But thank you, Mr. President. I'll have the rest of the month to get to my other questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. We have Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the good Madam Mayor. So, one of the things I didn't hear a whole lot of was around youth. And, you know, one of my, the priorities, like, I was going to tease you, I hope that Mobile City Hall isn't the street-talking van that I'm trying to bring back from the '90s because.
Jesse's Van?
Jesse's.
Because the street-talking van had Chris and a basketball and other things, and, you know, but I hear you on the, Mobile City Hall sounds great, but I, but I hope we can put some resources and put some people on the, on the street to help, you know, reach some kids before they end up reaching for the guns, so.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President, to the good Counselor from Ward 4. We affectionately call this Jesse's Mobile Van. So, we, we have thought of different iterations, but we think it's a fabulous idea. We are, we are trying to figure out how can we reach everybody, but youth are proud of this in the equity support team, so with adults working out and, you know, being out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly, then Gomez-Mocod.
I thought you were before me, but. Thank you so much, Mayor Ballantyne, for being with us tonight, and thank you to the staff for providing this budget in advance. I know this was a request that we've made throughout the Charter Review process, and I hope that our residents who are here and participating recognize the transparency and oversight role that we all have as the council, but for you all, the accessibility that when we get the budget early, you have time to dig into it and ask us questions that we then get to ask department heads and the mayor and the staff who run the city. So, I just want to start by really appreciating you for doing that work and working way late on Friday. That email came in past business hours. I came in with 30 questions, and I promise I'm not going to ask 30 questions. I boiled everything down to like six or seven. The 30 questions will get saved for when all of you wonderful department heads are in front of us in the next few weeks. I just want to call attention to one of the quotes from the Treasury Department, the Treasury Division, that stole my heart when I read it. "No vacancies, thank goodness, small miracles." I think that just summarized the intent and the spirit that so many of the department heads put into this process and how I'm going to be approaching every single department as they become more and more in-depth as we go through this process. So, I've got a handful of questions that are high-level. I tried to condense my 30 into buckets and summaries, and so if I need to slow down or clarify, just let me know because they get a little complicated at times. So, there are several new positions and programs in multiple departments that have lots of overlap. I'm just thinking off the top of my head, the ADA Field Associate in Engineering, this new position that's been started. There's an ADA Coordinator in RSJ. We've got Grant Analysts in HHS. We've got a Grant Analyst now in OSPCD. We've got Financial Analysts in the Office of Sustainability, CCE, SPD, Financial Managers in multiple departments. So, for you as the executive, when you're looking at the entirety of the FY24 budget, how did you plan on ensuring these roles don't become duplicative?
Sure. Mr. President, thank you. Through you to the good Counselor-at-Large. The ADA new position that we're adding in Engineering is someone who has technical experience, that is actually out on the sidewalks. I will say that that was a request of the Commission on Disabilities. So, that's someone with technical experience. In terms of, you know, Grant Analysts or different departments having positions that have the same title, those departments, I will, you know, the department heads can talk in more detail, but they, they either manage a lot of money or they manage a lot of information, and there's nobody in that department to do that, except, as I was saying before, it's the department head. So, the department head ends up being like the bookkeeper or accountant that is trying to keep track of the money, for example. Or one thing that, when we have all these wonderful ambitious ideas to start new programs, we don't have a centralized project manager that tries to bring all the department heads together. What has historically happened is some department manager has been assigned to it, but again, if they're a flat department, they, they have to do that in addition to what they're doing. And our organization has grown so large, this municipality, they, they just can't. So, it is getting back to the scaling of the organization. When you're growing an organization, you have to start filling in the gaps.
Thank you for that. You know, one of the council's top priorities, and I've heard this from a few of my colleagues tonight, was housing. I know I was really excited to read about the Communications Coordinator in HHS and the Housing Legal Counsel in the Housing Division. Those are exciting positions that are going to do a lot of good and a lot of service for our residents. But in going through the budget, and of course, it's a 400-page document, and I still need a little more time, I struggle to identify where some of these direct aid programs, I'm just going to colloquially call that, things like the Municipal Voucher Program, rental assistance, or the 100 Homes. I struggle to see increases in ordinary maintenance lines, and you addressed this a little bit in answering some of the previous questions, with $3 million in free cash being allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the additional resources for the Municipal Voucher Program that came earlier in the year. But moving forward, looking into the FY24 budget, what are the numbers that are going to things like flex funds, rental assistance, the Municipal Voucher Program, 100 Homes, that we are not seeing on the books? I think that would be helpful for folks to hear.
Super. So, that, those are sources of revenue from someplace else. It's not something I have off the top of my head. I guess, yeah, the Budget Director will get you that information. When you talk about, you know, administering the programs, again, that's staff. So, the Municipal Voucher Program, that's through our Housing Department, correct? And, you know, some of the others that you were mentioning come out of our Office of Housing Stability. So, it's staff who's connecting people to the resources, but it's not necessarily where they hold the money.
Right, totally. And I think the question I'm getting at, and we can offline this and get a better dollar figure, is, you know, when we've got residents in the room who are saying, "Make sure you're investing in housing," and I look at, you know, the OHS budget, or I look at the Housing Division's budget, and the ordinary maintenance line is pretty flat, it's helpful for us as your communicators to be able to communicate to folks and say, "This is what we're investing in." So, I recognize we don't have that number off the top of our heads. The $3 million number going to the trust fund I heard tonight is fantastic. I hope we can see more money by the end of this process, but I just, I wanted to ask that question while, while I have you with us tonight. Just moving kind of steadily along, one of the other council's top priorities was rodent control. Counselor McGlaughlin asked a question along those lines tonight, and again, I'm very excited to see another environmental health coordinator. Obviously, the Environmental Health Coordinator, Ziegler, has been a rock star in the streets, just pounding the pavement, talking to so many folks. But similarly, when I went through the department budgets to look actually at the, I was going to say bones of what extermination looks like of rats, the only increase I saw was $20,000 in the ISD budget, and the DPW Buildings Department was level-funded for their extermination. Totality of that is $280,000 for extermination, which represents 0.09% of the budget being spent on the actual extermination of rodents. Is there more money in the budget for doing the work that the environmental health coordinators are going to be doing on the ground? Dollars that we can point to in this budget and say, "Nope, it's, it's more than just 0.09% of the total budget?"
Through you, Mr. President, to the good Counselor-at-Large. We'll get those numbers for you. It's, thank you. The Budget Director will be back in touch.
I'll see him all week, all next few weeks. A few more high-level questions. You know, in going through the budget, I think it's, every department is so nuanced, and you cannot look at one number and say, "This defines the totality of a department," right? We all know this. We all know that every department has got money encumbered, there's PTS funds that are being spent, there's all types of stuff that paints a picture of what a department is doing, not just the dollar amount of what they spend. And yet, there are quite a few departments in the FY23 budget that spent less than 50% of their department's budget. It's not a thing to write that department off, but it is a concern. So, for you as the executive, as the person who looks high-level at each and every department and makes decisions for the totality of the city, how are you going to intervene in the coming year to ensure that departments that are chronically underspending their budgets are getting the support to reach that full capacity and take advantage of the budgets that they've been allocated?
Through you, Mr. President, to the good Counselor-at-Large. Thank you for the question. We have finally staffed up our Summer Stat Department. So, to your point, it is, how do we see progress towards our goals and also our financial spending? So, we have, have a system in place that we're working on, but our Director of Summer Stat can talk about that, but it was with that point in mind to be able, does somebody need some extra help? Or, as the department heads will tell you, they'll, they'll be able to answer the specific questions. But in terms of leading this, this organization, I agree with you. That is what we're going to be able to do. Our CIO, our Director of Summer Stat, the, will help, help us get to where we can measure things now. Thank you.
Yeah, only a few more. We're at, we're at the bottom half of the list. So, you just mentioned the CIO position, and, you know, I'm so excited, we have the new CIO in the room. She's been with us for about a month. And one thing that came to my attention was she had just barely been in the council chambers a few weeks ago introducing herself to us, and a deputy CIO ended up in the budget. For me, using I statements, when I look at that, I would have hoped we would have a year of a CIO under our belt to say, "This is the work that's being done, and this is why we need a department expansion already." But of course, we haven't had that much time with the CIO yet. So, what's the justification for a new position so soon after hiring the current CIO?
There's so much work to be done. And I will say, we started a new Office of Housing Stability, a new Office of Racial and Social Justice, and those were positions that are needed in order to move the programs forward, but there's... But there's, we know from best practices and working as a team here, that we need that support in order to execute on all the ambitious and also some of the unsexy stuff that goes on behind the scenes.
Yeah, thank you for that. So of course, we've heard a lot tonight from different counselors about alternative emergency responses, and I'm not going to relitigate the conversation that just happened, but, you know, in reading the description that has been put forward in this budget, I obviously have concerns, but the main question I have for you, as you were drafting this position and working with Core and thinking it through, how does a person get in touch with the jail division, jail diversion coordinators? Do they have to interact with the criminal legal system before they're put in touch with one of them? Of course, Core works off of a referral model, they're referred folks from SPD. Is that how the jail diversion coordinators will work? How will they, how will folks get in touch with jail diversion coordinators?
So right now, it's working with the director, which is Patty Contente. I will let the Police Department and Patty talk specifically about all the programming, but they're clinicians, too.
Right. But the question is, what is the first contact that gets them to Patty? Is it an interaction with the police, and then they get put in touch with jail diversion? Deputy Chief Ward, welcome.
Thank you.
President, Deputy Chief Christopher Ward for the Police Department. Counselor, to answer your question, when a call comes in to the CAD system, it's registered, and we have a flagging protocol. The calls are flagged, Patty reviews the calls, regardless if there's any type of action taken by the police. She calls, makes phone calls to the people that called to ask them if they need help and assistance. So she actually reaches out to them, regardless of what the police do at the particular call.
Right. So just to clarify, the first interaction is with the Police Department, and then the second interaction might be with either Patty through Core or the jail diversion coordinators?
Yes.
In theory.
Yes. But there could also be multiple contacts as well. Just because we go to a call, we could clear the call very quickly. Patty will absolutely have a follow-up afterwards on the call to make sure they, to see if they need assistance.
Right, the aftercare component.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you for answering that question, you know.
Excuse me. So one thing I forgot to say, excuse me, through you, Mr. President, to the good counselor at large.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Is that our Public Safety for All Task Force is designing what we need to do and what the model is that we're trying to work on.
Right. And I'm looking forward to serving on that as the council's representative. I, you know, I ask this question because, for me at least, when I talk about alternative emergency response, I want someone to call when my unhoused neighbor is having a crisis, and I don't necessarily want a person with a gun to show up, right? I want someone to call when a loved one is experiencing a mental health crisis, right? So I'm, of course, this is not news to anybody in this room, concerned that the first contact in this chain of command is police for folks. We're not going to solve that tonight, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear about how the actual chain of command with the jail diversion coordinators works.
Okay.
Last two, I promise. So obviously, you mentioned this at the top of the hour, the Winter Hill School tonight had an unfortunate announcement that it has to be closed tomorrow due to the unsafe conditions. Of course, this council heard extensively from educators last year, right at the beginning of the budget process. The city has, of course, submitted a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority in terms of moving forward on not just the Winter Hill, but the Brown School. But given today's dangerous conditions at the Winter Hill and the uncertain nature of the MSBA, you know, can you outline how your administration, obviously with the information that you have from today, is going to expeditiously move forward, given the rapid deterioration at the Winter Hill?
Through you, Mr. President. We are in assessment mode. We're working as fast as we can. We do not like to do this. And as more information comes, we can share it with you.
Last question, and thank you all to my colleagues for your patience. Again, it was 30, now it's 8. The previous council's priority process, back when we were talking about the FY23 budget, one of the central priorities was a community center that folks could go to and get services, a place that, you know, what I've heard from folks is a missing space in our community, where that joy and that well-being and that connectivity all comes together for our residents. You know, under your leadership, being able to hit that AAA bond rating is phenomenal. It means that we can bond out and we're building projects. So given this opportunity that we have, and I see the finance folks cringing and hopefully smiling, how can we take this opportunity of our AAA bond rating to move a community center forward?
So thank you for that. The first thing is the well-being of our, you know, making sure that we have safe schools and the city buildings that even city staff have to work with. The community center certainly is, I understand it's a priority of the school. That is why we have proposed a community process around two buildings to turn over ownership in the east and the west for the community. And the community will figure out what it is, whether, and what kind of services they want there. Our capital investment plan has to deal with our aging infrastructure. There hasn't been investment in 20 years, and that's our priority. And, yeah. We're working on it. We're talking, you know, we're trying to be creative, if anything that I've learned from our city staff, and certainly our community members, is how creative they can be. So we're listening, as I said at the front end, we're listening to everybody. Plus, we have over 100,000 311 calls and requests. But safety is first. It's our schools, it's our city buildings. Because even our city staff have had to have been vacated from buildings over this past year because the buildings were not in the best condition. And as you can see from our ceiling, over here in the chambers, we have issues with this building, too.
Thank you so much. That's the end of my questions. I'm going to turn it back over to my colleagues. I appreciate you going so thoroughly through everything tonight in the presentation and with me right now and with all of us. And thank you, department heads, for suffering through me tonight. You'll have a few more weeks of me coming up.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Well, thank you first. I want to acknowledge all the staff that's here present today, because it does take a village. So thanks to all the staff, and there's more staff behind them, seeing them out in the streets, cleaning up our parks. So I just want to thank all of you, because we couldn't do our jobs without you, and thank you for putting up with us counselors, sometimes myself, in a hysteria like, "Why haven't you fixed this?" So. And I also, I'm going to try to go really fast, as fast as possible, also acknowledging our schools who have taken our children after a long crisis. They dealt with the first pandemic, then now they're dealing with the second pandemic, which is a mental health crisis in our youth. So I'll try to go fast, and you have a great task on you. In addition to our buildings that unfortunately, we, school buildings have underfunded by many years. We cannot forget, our budget was $180 million 10 years ago. We have almost doubled that. We now have the resources to move forward, and we saw it today in the Winter Hill, this building is in crisis. But I, as a person who works in construction, unfortunately, these things don't get solved overnight. And I just ask that we all work as a community, as a village, to get this together. So I just want to acknowledge, and I know it's scary, and I've seen this happen in other buildings, why we don't invest more, you know. Ideally, when the high school got done, we should have had the next building in the pipeline. It didn't happen. Why, I don't know. But I know we're going to get better at this. So, and I also want to acknowledge the members of the community who are here. I want to acknowledge the portraits behind us and the diversity we have here now. I hope this is more of our Somerville in the future. And, you know, I know we're dealing again and for, housing is a national, regional crisis, and it's not sustainable the way we've built the housing in this country. I was just, I spent too much information, two and a half weeks in children's hospitals for personal reasons, and I know staff there that travels from New Hampshire, Maine, Rhode Island, because they can't afford housing here. So it is a national crisis, and I think, again, we need to work every stone unturned out there. So thank you so much, and I hope, again, we all work together on this. I do have one question related to the housing. 24 Cross Street is out there, you, which I'm really glad to see. Someone from my community said, "Do you know any city sites that could be converted to housing?" And I said, "24 Cross Street." And one of the questions, and again, people, I'm dreaming, I don't know how realistic that is, but I'm a dreamer. Is the idea, when you say a nonprofit, could a possibility be that a property like that, we could look an affordable housing investor? Is that one of the ideas we would have in there when we have that property out there? And you don't have to commit to it, just...
It's a community process. It's a conversation. What we hear about loud and clear is, there's not enough services. The nonprofit sector in Somerville that provides the services is small, that they need space, they need a community center. There are opportunities here, but, you know, we can think creatively, but that's what the community process is for.
And we can always be vertical, too, you know. Community center underground, and housing above. I'm dreaming again, folks, sorry. So I do have a quick question. I know I put a request, and I don't mean to put folks in a spot, but I put a request for a program manager for prevailing wage, living wage, wage theft ordinance oversight. And I know this is not on the budget. It is a passion of mine. I am getting a lot of calls from folks, which wage theft issues, and I know resources out there, we need more. Can you say why that was, and nothing like that is in our budget right now? I'm happy to take it offline, but I do have to mention it because it is a passion of mine.
Through you, Mr. President, to the good counselor from Ward 5. Thank you. You have been a champion of this. I would just say that we will get back to you on that, the Budget Director.
As I said, a large business in Assembly, someone called me on that, and I, my heart breaks every time. I can't help folks. And again, this is part of a national, greater national crisis, where we just don't address our immigration issues, and we have people in a very unstable situation out there. So thank you. With that, I want to ask my fellow counselors to be, I'm seeing a lot of questions sometimes that are questions that if you sat down with department heads, they would explain to you of how things operate. So remember, we have a lot of parents here. We don't have all the time in the world. Let's, if there are things you can do in advance and talk to folks, I know I've learned a lot from talking to staff. So I ask that we be considerate. This is, we should be a pro-family city council, first and foremost. Let's be different from the man behind us, and let's move forward. And one last statement I want to make, I know everybody is, we are going to be talking about alternative emergency response. Unfortunately, I know mental health too well, and it's very complicated. And I hope that we don't use these chambers to politicize mental health, because it requires input from everybody in the community on this. I was just in a floor where a child, a child was having a violent crisis. There were nurses, social workers, doctors, psychiatrists, psychologists. Nobody would walk in that room until five security officers walked in there to just calm down the child. Few days later, the child was walking through the corridors just fine. If you've ever dealt with someone in a mental health crisis directly, and I know this from experience, when that demon is in their head, it is a crisis situation. And that's something we need to discuss as to how we need to handle it. What the Core Program does, and my understanding is, the police respond to that crisis, whether it should the police or not. I don't want to respond to that. I want the professionals who deal with this, and even the professionals, we have so many new mental health crises that the professionals don't even understand it themselves. We, it's like, it's the white shark out there, you know? It's like the ocean. It's the universe, mental health is. So I ask that we don't politicize it in these chambers, that we really talk with everyone. This is not going to be solved overnight. It's not. We are dealing with a major, major crisis, and it's particularly affecting our youth. We have seen youth in their early twenties lose their lives on a gun. We have, we see youth having overdoses. We have youth starving themselves. There's a lot going out there, their minds. We have, let's be the adults in the room and talk like adults in the room, and talk about mental illness as a complex issue, and know that we don't all have the answers. Even the doctors out there don't have the answers. Even within the institutions, I see things that are wrong out there. And we need to talk about it in a very sensitive way, and we cannot politicize it. Thank you.
I saw a few hands come up. I just wanted to say, on the topic of staff for the Wage Theft Committee, stay tuned for the presentation of the City Council Budget. I saw Klingon, Scott, and Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. And I love my colleague from Ward 5, but I do think that at times, it is necessary for, in the name of transparency, to ask questions in the public eye. So that said, since the Winter Hill was evoked a few times this evening, I wasn't going to ask a question, but it's probably, since we are talking about the budget, I think it might be pertinent to ask the mayor if there's been any monies, contingency plan money set aside for either staff or swing space, you know, being able to put money towards that, if in fact, I know we don't know anything yet, and it may just be a small piece fell, and maybe the school is, the engineers say it's completely secure, but as we continue to, you know, like what happened with the Brown a few years ago, is there, do you have a contingency plan or monies put aside to handle such a situation?
So we're working on it. We're addressing everything. We just don't have anything to share back, but we will be back to you shortly. If not tomorrow, we still have to collect some information or over the weekend. But, I mean, I believe, I'm not sure who said it earlier, but it is, maybe it was counselor from, the good counselor from Ward 2 who was talking about, you have to potentially change the CIP and redirect funds. The students are important, their safety is important, our schools are important, and we will do what it needs to take to get it done, to make sure that they're safe and have a healthy environment.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing else.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, for a quick second bite of the apple. I want to thank my colleague from Ward 5 for bringing up wage theft, and I will sit on the edge of my seat for your comments in the City Council Budget on the wage theft staff. I also appreciate my colleague from Ward 4 bringing up the swing space question, and just an emergency response plan on the building side for the schools. You know, in addition to the long-term, again, adjustment of the capital improvement plan, I'm glad to hear that you're open to that. But, you know, I actually just got an email from Darcy Hannah, who almost exactly one year ago sent us an email talking about the miserable conditions over at the Winter Hill. So is there an emergency plan that's in place? Is there swing space that's available for these students?
We do have spaces we can work on. We will be sharing very shortly what our plan is.
Okay, great. Then, Mr. President, my last question, and this, I appreciate all the other questions my colleagues asked, and some of the things that the good counselor at large, Kelly, said, you know, one of the themes that I know you recall from our time together in the Finance Committee, is the downright crisis that we have in terms of filling our frontline worker positions in DPW, in ISD, in water, in sewer. And I guess, I am trying to reconcile the fact that we are continuing to leave those wages where they are, and now your second budget. are, and now your second budget, uh, and, and not act urgently to fill that capacity, and, you know, as we talk about building capacity in the city, I'm trying to understand the priority of expanding the managerial capacity without backfilling the actual frontline workers that these departments are very short of.
Uh, we are, through you, Mr. President, to the counselor from Ward Two, we're working on everything, as I believe our, um, uh, Director of Recruiting in HHS, Valeska Alves, came before the, the City Council, this, uh, the Finance Committee, to share with you on how, how much, um, effort and work and how, uh, well the city is doing compared to other municipalities to fill positions. Uh, there are some positions you might be talking about that are union position, and I'm not at a, at a point that we can discuss that. But we're looking at everything, everything. It's, we, it's a holistic approach.
Well, through the President, I, I can appreciate that. A great many of these positions are in fact union positions, um, and, and I know it takes time, but again, it's been about a year and a half, and I am, uh, you know, to your concept about the village, right? That, that we, we are the village. I, I just would offer that if we're not paying our frontline workers enough to live in this community, to be of this community and maintain this community, then we're not actually building a village anymore, we'll, we're building a theme park that looks like a village. So, uh, it is my hope, my very fervent hope, uh, that there is going to be more capacity directed, um, towards the frontline positions, and I would treasure, I would cherish any opportunity to hear about, um, about how we're going to resolve that with the union. Thank you.
We're in, through you, Mr. President, we're in active, uh, we have 11 contracts that are up, we're in active negotiations, and we will update everybody as we move forward, but we have a holistic approach. We care about our employees.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the point that was made earlier about, uh, questions, I, I just want to remind colleagues that, uh, for the email you all received yesterday, the innovation that was, was made last year during budget season, the idea of pre-submitted questions, it's back, it's better, uh, you could submit up to 10 at a time, we ask that you try to get those in, if you can please, 48 hours in advance of that departmental hearing, that just gives department and division heads that much more time, uh, to, to answer those questions with the staff memo. It reduces the amount of time that we have to spend with folks, uh, lets us adjourn earlier in Finance Committee meetings, and just leads to a, a better process in general, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, colleagues, I'd like to welcome our School Department to present the annual school budget, and thank you all, uh, for being here tonight.
Mr. President, thank you.
Let's take a five-minute recess. the readings of items seven-one to seven to ten-seven, and refer those to the Finance Committee.
Ten-six.
Yeah, through ten-six, please.
And that brings us to item 10.7, which is an officer's communication from the Superintendent of Schools conveying the school department budget approved by the School Committee's Finance and Facility Subcommittee meeting as a committee of the whole on May 16th, 2023.
Excellent, welcome, and welcome to our colleagues in the School Committee who have joined us here tonight, and members of the school staff, thank you all for being here. Chair Green.
Thank you, I'll keep this introduction extraordinarily brief. Um, I just want to acknowledge, uh, first of all, the people at this table, uh, starting to my immediate, um, left, this is Chief Financial Officer Fran Goroski, um, next to him is Interim Superintendent, uh, Jeffrey Curly, and at the far end of the table is our superintendent designate, Dr. Ruben Carmona. Uh, just want to make sure, let me have an opportunity to introduce Dr. Carmona to the, to the council tonight. Um, and I can say I'll keep this introduction brief, so I'll just say that this is, uh, my sixth budget as either School Committee Chair or Chair of Finance, um, and it is, I think, the most transparent, most thorough all-funds budget we've ever done, which, in our process of doing this with the community, was an opportunity for some people, to the first time they really see how this process gets made, which, um, was both a blessing and a curse, but I think this is a budget we're proud of, as the mayor said, it, it's part of a three-year plan to smooth out the quote-unquote S R cliff, so that we are able to continue to provide students the valuable supports they need coming out of the pandemic, even as the federal government, um, frankly, abandons its responsibilities to students. And with that, Dr. Curly.
Thank you, Chair Green, uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Chair for the opportunity to present tonight, uh, on behalf of the Somerville School Committee and Somerville Public Schools, um, thank you to the council for having us, um, and thank you Mayor Ballantyne for your presentation and continued investment in our youth. Um, I also want to just welcome, uh, Dr. Carmona, uh, to the excitement that is Somerville budget season, he's coming right at the perfect time to get the full sense of, uh, our community process here, and the range of amazing issues that you all take on, um, in the city to support not, not just our youth, but all of our residents. Um, the budget we're presenting tonight, um, as the Chair referenced- The budget we're presenting tonight, as the chair referenced, Chair Green referenced, comes at a critical time for school districts across the country as next October, we will see sun setting of massive federal ESER funding. So a lot of what we're trying to do in this budget is make sure that we have a smooth transition to next year, that Dr. Carmona is set up to have a successful first year as the permanent superintendent. Fortunately, he and I have been able to meet over the last few months, and our team is excited to kind of get up and running. I'll be supporting him, as will Mr. Gorski, over these next few summer months and making sure that he's ready to go starting next year. Tonight, I just want to highlight some of the work that we've undertaken to build on the momentum of last year's accomplishments and to look ahead a little bit to what we're hoping to accomplish next year. This budget makes critical investments in whole-child education, in special education, and in our growing population of multilingual learners. It builds on the equity work that we have been doing since Superintendent Skipper started here, and it really makes sure that, coming out of the pandemic, we're continuing to invest in the mental health supports and to the academic recovery that we know our students need. I also will highlight that this budget expands, continues to expand access to out-of-school time, thanks in no part to the mayor's additional investment in the school budget. And I'll talk a little bit more about what those critical supports will go to for our students. Next slide, please. We could not do this work without your counterparts, our elected members of the School Committee. Chair Green and Finance Chair Crepshin have been instrumental in helping us shape this budget and prepare for the transition to Dr. Carmona's tenure next year. I do also want to thank Mayor Ballantyne and President Euan Campan for being critical members of the School Committee and picking up a few additional extra meetings on your schedules. Thank you. Next slide. Our guiding principle in everything we do and throughout this budget is really developing the whole child. It is through fostering that intellectual, social, and emotional development of our students that we hope to create the environment that lets them flourish, where diversity is celebrated in our schools and where students can really become lifelong learners. It's something that we hope you'll see is woven throughout every aspect of this budget. And we believe it's absolutely critical to the success of our students, to empowering them to have agency, to be change-makers, and to be the future leaders of Somerville and all of our communities throughout this country. Next slide. All right. And now I'm going to turn it over to Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Gorski, to talk a little bit about our budget process.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Chair, and City Council members, and the mayor, and other school department staff here. So in the next two slides, I'm going to take us through the guidelines and timeline that we utilize in our budget development process. So under the guidelines that we utilize in every budget, our budgets are student-centered, student-based, and accountability-focused. So under student-centered, we provide equitable access for all students. We address the social-emotional wellness needs and learning loss due to the pandemic and remote learning. Maintain our classrooms and provide academic support and enrichment opportunities for all of our students. And make investments to promote school readiness for the youngest members of our city and ensure college and career readiness for those getting ready to graduate from our schools. On the accountability side, we engage in a fully inclusive and transparent process with the School Committee, and this includes our principals, department heads, our PTA, and the city. Ensure legal and contractual mandates are met, and those include special education and multilingual services. With the wind down of ESER funding, budget efficiently and responsibly so needed contracts and positions can be moved to the local budget. And as we'll see later in this presentation, we've moved some positions over from ESER back to the general fund. And continue the all-funds approach to budgeting that we have in the past few cycles in light of the increased federal funding in response to the pandemic. Our budget development process begins back in the fall. So we confirm our staffing plan. We review grant and revolving accounts and fixed accounts. We begin meeting with departments and school leaders. With our principals, we take a look at facilities issues. And in the past couple of cycles, we've looked at the funding allocations and the priorities with our ESER funding. And then in the winter, we begin the process of having budget collaborative meetings with our principals and department leaders. And in some of these larger departments and larger schools, we have multiple meetings, the high school, for example. So we review data, and I do want to give a shout out to our data team, Sam and Sarah Jo, who put together amazing data slide deck for those meetings and did a lot of work on this presentation this evening. We pulled data in to take a look at the requests and the schools, school leaders had and department leaders, department heads had. And it was quite striking to take a look at the data prior to the pandemic and how that had affected test scores and the like have been affected by the pandemic and how we're starting to return to normal. We finalize the staffing and requests in the spring. We obviously have multiple meetings with our School Committee and a public hearing. School Committee voted and approved the budget, and obviously, we come to City Council to present our budget this evening. With that, I turn it back over to the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. Somerville is a diverse district with nearly 5,000 students. Fifty-five percent of those students are high-needs, and more than half of the students who we support live in families that speak a language other than English at home. The district has multiple specialized programs at different schools to support our students with disabilities and our multilingual learning.
Can you put the mic a little closer to your mouth, please? I think the hum in the room makes it here difficult to hear.
Will do. Is that better? Great. Next slide, please. This slide highlights five of our core areas on which we center our approach to serving and supporting our students, staff, and families. All of our work is grounded in equity. We continue to examine and adjust our practices and create systems that align with our commitment to equitable access and opportunity for all students. As we continue to recover from the pandemic, it's really critical that we invest the necessary resources to support students' academic recovery and their continued social, emotional, and mental health recovery. As was referenced earlier, there is a mental health crisis among our youth. It is happening across the country. It is something that we have aimed last year to really work to address, and we continue to aim in this budget to address. In addition, among one of our most important commitments was also to the creation of the Office of Basic Needs and Housing Support Services, led by Regina Bortoldo, to ensure that our youth experiencing homelessness get the critical support that they need. We also invested in the effort of planning for the future, preparing for an important transition in leadership, as well as setting a strong foundation for continued growth and success in the district. These just highlight a few of the areas in which we want to continue to invest in this budget. In the next few slides, I just want to highlight some important data points regarding trends in the district over the last 10 years. At a glance, you will obviously notice there is a striking difference in last year, school year '22's data compared to the trend of the last nine years. Last year was clearly a transition and recovery year for students across the country, but particularly here, as we returned to in-person learning after a year and a half of significant disruption, we saw a significant decrease in attendance rates last year. There are many, many factors that went into that. Many of our students needed to continue to work. You know, we had a number of the mental health challenges that have been referenced. Anxiety, depression rates led to significant school avoidance. But I'm happy to report that this year, we're starting to see an upward trend again. As of a month ago, our attendance rate was back up to 92%. We have considerable work to still do, particularly with chronic absenteeism among certain students. But this is work that we're investing in and making sure we're getting students back to school. Our suspension rates also returned to pre-COVID levels last year. So while our suspension rate remained lower than the state rates, we know that we must continue to invest in programs and supports that mitigate the disruption to student social development caused by the pandemic. And after nearly two years, you know, we're seeing things, again, come back to a bit normal of a level. We're really excited to highlight a focus on restorative justice training for our staff this year, something we did across all staff at the Tier One level. And we're seeing the impact of that effort already come through in a stabilization of the suspension rates. We've also invested and talked a little bit more about expansion of our peer mediation program and an ability to support and guide students who may be struggling. We also saw an increase in our dropout rates last year. Many of the same factors that I've talked about that affected our attendance rates impacted our dropout rates. This is something the Student Support Department and our principals are really trying to take head-on. This year, we've conducted more than 500 home visits in an effort to make sure we're re-engaging students that may be chronically absent or disengaged. And we're really confident that continued outreach will see a decreasing trend in this dropout rate over the next few years. Despite the challenges of the last three years, our four- and five-year graduation rates remain relatively stable. In last school year, our four-year graduation rate was nearly back to an all-time high of 88%. It's a testament, really, to the resilience of our students and our families, but also the dedication of our administrators, our educators, our staff, who have really re-engaged and made sure that our students are getting to graduation. And I am excited on Monday to participate in the Somerville High School graduation at Dilboi. This is data from last year's graduates, but I just want to highlight a few things, and we expect similar trends this year, talking to our Office of College and Career Readiness. In this year's Class of 2023, we have more than 16 students who will be attending Tufts University next year, more than 132 students who have been accepted to colleges and universities across the country. We have SPS students going to BU, to BC, to Bryn Mawr, Dartmouth, MIT, Stanford. It's a really incredible range of colleges that many of our students are going on to. And we have students going into the trades and going into careers. Three of our graduates are joining the Carpentry Union, two are joining the Electrical Union, and two are taking the Civil Service exam with plans to be firefighters. I just want to briefly highlight School Committee goals. So in developing our budget, we're very intentional, and we're going to frame this presentation briefly around each of the School Committee goals. They are a commitment to whole-child teaching and learning. So we're committed, again, to eliminating barriers to access, to really fostering the passion and the curiosity for our learners, to make sure that when they're in school, their learning feels authentic and meaningful. We want to ensure equitable access to programming. So we want to look at what the student makeup looks like in each of our schools and take a look at our equity policy and on our enrollment policy. We just, this year, completed an enrollment forecast for the next 10 years, and there'll be some Phase Two work from that to make sure that we're ensuring equitable access to programming for all of our students throughout the city. Workforce diversity. Research shows that all children benefit from highly skilled and diverse educator workforce. I'm happy that we have been strengthening our Human Resource Department, are really investing in the systems that support our educators and ensure that our staff population looks more like our student population. And last, equitable resource allocation. So this is an effort to try to make sure that our budgeting is really student-based, that we know students have varying levels of needs, and we want to make sure that schools are receiving the resources that they need to meet the needs of diverse and different students. I'm going to just briefly touch on a couple of the key areas. So first, around whole-child teaching and learning. We have made a considerable, in my six years here, a considerable investment in early childhood education. Any parent with young children knows the challenge of the cost of childcare right now, the challenges of securing childcare. We have been working very closely with the city, the Office of Summer Promise, to really make sure in early education, we're focusing on high-quality, inclusive classrooms that build around access, quality, wraparound, and workforce. So I just want to touch on just a couple of those things very quickly. We're proud to announce that this year, we supported approximately 506 early childhood students in 33 pre-K classrooms. This was work we did with the city's Summer Promise Program. We supported 39 families to ensure they had access to fully funded childcare. And we continue to make sure that we're investing in curricular supports and coaching for our childcare centers. We're taking a kind of collective action approach. So we have our pre-K classrooms, but we also work with early childcare centers around the city to make sure that families have access to high-quality early education before they start with us in Somerville Public Schools. Special education continues to be a major focus for the district. And as you'll hear from Mr. Gorski in a bit, it's a major factor in the non-payroll budget increases for FY24. This budget proposes a nearly $2 million increase to support our special education students. In addition to increasing added district tuition and transportation, which is something that all districts in the Commonwealth and frankly around the country are facing, our budget reflects an increase in targeted adjustments and supports based on changing enrollment in special education populations. Particularly, we've seen a significant increase in our autism spectrum students, and we have been growing our AIM programming. This budget will bring on a Director of the AIM programming, as well as a BCBA and an occupational therapist to support the increase in student enrollment that we've seen in the AIM program. We're also going to pilot a new language-based learning disability program, which will start in grades three through five and will be located at the Urgenziano School next year. And based on enrollment data, next year, we made some changes to where teachers are assigned in resource rooms and to make sure that we're continuing to kind of keep caseloads at an equitable and a manageable level for our special education staff. Another key focus is supporting our multilingual learners through our MLE department. That department's led by Paulina Metropolis, and it's really been focused on programming curriculum, professional learning, and career pathways, and partnerships with our families. This is an area where the department has done some really great work. They've worked with Leslie University on creating a paraprofessional pathway, and they've also worked on Spell Parent Partnerships, which led to hiring of some parents, some Somerville parents to work with us in the school system. Especially as we've emerged from the pandemic, we know we have a mental health crisis. It was referenced earlier by Counselor Gomez-McCaw. We continue to invest deeply in social-emotional wellness that we know is critical both for our students and our staff. Last year, we invested in nine school-based social workers. Those individuals have been incredibly important to the fabric of our schools. They have been working, they worked this year with more than 450 students in either one-on-one or small group settings. We've doubled the staff in our mediation program, which has been incredibly important, particularly at Somerville High School and Next Way Full Circle. And in terms of school discipline, we've really been shifting away from punitive action, such as long-term suspensions, which we know, when we know prevention and intervention strategies are we know when we know prevention and intervention strategies are are better at keeping our students in school and supporting their learning. So next year, at the high school, we're requesting a prevention intervention specialist that would ensure that students have kind of alternatives to suspension and to be able to continue their time in school rather than outside. And finally, we're excited to continue to really roll out restorative justice to our pre-K and eight staff. We began tier one trainings this year for educators. It's been met with a very positive response to everybody who's participated, and we're going to continue to roll out and invest in trainings for additional school staff kind of moving into tier tier two and tier three to make sure that, again, that positive and trusting school environment is there for our students. I want to just talk about a few of the investments in out-of-school time. So I've been with the district for six years, and in that time, we have partnered with Breakthrough Greater Boston, Becoming a Man, Boston Debate League, Working on Womanhood, N-Route, Soccer Without Borders, some really incredible community programs that support our students. These programs, as you all know and have advocated, are vital in ensuring that our students have enriching, hands-on experiences beyond the school day. We're we're continuing in this invest in this budget, and and thanks to the mayor's additional requested appropriation, we're looking to expand a number of those proven programs. So when I started here six years ago, we were at about 500 out-of-school time spots. Next year, we should be over 1,800 spots. That includes after-school and then summer learning spots for our students. This next slide just shows the district's growing financial commitment to extending our learning programs. So we're going to, through this additional $550,000, really invest in recruiting initiatives to ensure that we address the staffing challenges that we continue to see in out-of-school time, particularly with community schools, and try to reduce the staff as the student waitlist that we see at schools like the Argenziano and the Kennedy particularly. We want to fully fund the calculus project, which serves students in after-school and summer, and make sure that, you know, they're on track as they enter into the high school to take whatever math pathway they wish. We're going to expand evidence expand our investments in evidence-based programming, such as the Becoming a Man program, the Working on Women program, and the N-Route program, which works with our MLE students at the high school. That program will move into the Winter Hill as well. And we're working with our principals to kind of identify any additional programming gaps or barriers that students face in this area and ensure we try to tackle those gaps for those schools. So our second goal here is equitable access to programming. I'm I'm pleased to report that as of last month, pre-K and K enrollment in the district are back to pre-pandemic levels. The district's enrollment remains steady and strong. This year, we are seeing particular increases, as I said, in our AIM programming, in our MLE programming, and in our newcomer classes. And as of early spring, our amazing enrollment team, which you see here, led by Teresa Rodriguez, registered more than 660 students who will be enrolling Through our Department of Equity and Excellence, we're maintaining equitable access to programming through critical investments in our schools, as well as the district level. Last year, we added equity specialists at each school and a full-time equity coach who works across the district to support our educators in improving curriculum, improving practices, and creating welcoming classrooms that celebrate diversity, equity, inclusion. We're going to continue to build on that work this year, providing additional PD and training for staff, particularly around AAPI, special education, and multilingual learners. And finally, I just want to highlight the great work of SFLC, our amazing family and community engagement department. This is a group that has provided critical resources, services, and supports for the vast majority of our students and families. The SFLC staff, our school liaisons, our coordinators, serve hundreds of our families, providing multilingual playgroups, parent English classes, basic needs and housing supports, and multilingual services. It's an incredible group, and we are very happy with the retirement of Naomi Davidson to still have some of her time and to have Ruth Santos now leading that that Our third goal here is workforce diversity. People are at the heart, obviously, of what we do. Our work is human improvement in youth, and 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 everything we do is trying to make sure that our our staff feel supported in the work that they do. People are 80% of our budget, and, you know, it is in our talent strategy centered around kind of three interconnected goals and focus areas that are all grounded in equity that we do our work. The first is recruiting, hiring, and retaining highly effective and diverse staff. The second is ensuring that every staff member has a positive experience in our district from the moment they interview to the moment they leave. And the third is making sure that SPS is the best possible place to work, by providing opportunities for leadership, by acknowledging the incredible work of our staff, and celebrating them and their accomplishments. And our final goal is around equitable resource allocation, and I will turn it over to Mr.
So our next several slides are going to focus on finance and the budget itself. This initial slide is related to the per pupil expenditures. This is based on FY22 data. Every district in the Commonwealth files an end-of-year financial report with DESI, breaks down our all of our revenue and expenditures by funding source and by different categories. So the city of Somerville, based on the FY22 data, expends almost $24,000 per pupil. That's inclusive of our general fund budget, city expenditures in support of the schools, and our grants. One thing that I want, and this is about $900 more than it was in FY21. One part of the grant and all in all these categories across the board were at or above the state average. One one bar that I want to point out for the council is what we're expending on teachers. As you can see, that's the the tall bar three in on from the left. For teachers, we're expending about $1,600 per pupil more than the state average. Let me go in. We go into our budget summary. So our budget is divided into two halves. We have our non-salary budget, which is our operations and maintenance, and our salary budget is, as the superintendent mentioned, which is about 80% of our budget. The non-salary budget supports operations, contracts, transportation, out-of-district tuitions. Typically, this side of the budget, we see about a two and a half, 3% increase annually. As you can see, the number that jumps out here is that we requested 2.3 million dollar increase of 14.71%. This is being driven by the increase in the cost of out-of-district tuitions primarily. One of the slides that I shared with school committee at one of our finance meetings showed a decade worth of out-of-district tuition increases being at 2% annually, and then for FY24, it's 14%. Also included in this non-salary, if we can go to the next slide, non-salary budget proposal, and I've broken this into four buckets. As the superintendent mentioned, obviously, special education is a driver of this budget. There's $900,000 additional to cover the increased cost of out-of-district tuitions. There's also just some additional funding for sped special ed transportation. There's the additional funding by the city. Again, we want to thank the mayor for her continued support of the education of our students, which includes $500,000 for out-of-school time programming, and an additional $120,000 to make our student MBTA passes for our grades seven through 12 students from school year to full year. Under technology, $151,000 for Wi-Fi hotspots for our school buildings, and $125,000 for Chromebooks. We had been able to reduce the Chromebooks in our technology budget because of the additional funding that came out of CARES Act. And at the state level, there were there were technology-specific grants. There were also ESTR funding, which we were able to purchase Chromebooks. And the city actually purchased some Chromebooks on behalf of the school department. But this is part of normalizing that budget and increasing putting the Chrome the funding back in for Chromebooks. And then under school-based, a request that had been come out of the last couple of budget cycles from the PTA and from school committee was with the with the increase in cost of transportation, adding additional funding into school budgets for field trip transportation. Our next slide, so as I mentioned, the other side of our budget is our salary budget, which again is about 80% of our budget, or a little bit more than 80%. For this year, the request was an increase of 4.9 million or 6.41%. And this increase was largely driven by the expansion of our special ed, special ed classrooms, and the transition of 14.1 FTEs from ESTR to the district budget. So as we mentioned previously, obviously, the superintendent had mentioned this, we have the wind down of ESTR funding. We had approximately 55 positions between the ESTR two and ESTR three allocations. The movement of those positions that the district wants to continue onto the general fund so that we don't hit a revenue cliff next year when that funding expires in 0930 of '24. You have the next slide? Thank you. Again, broken down our salary budget proposal into four buckets. Special education being a large part of this. Funding for three additional autism classrooms at Winter Hill, which includes three teachers, five paras, one BCBA, and one occupational therapist, an additional seat classroom at the Kennedy, which includes a teacher and a para, a sped teacher for a language-based classroom at Argenziano, a sped teacher and para for a new ECIP classroom at Capuano, and a one-to-one para at the Healy, which was added this year but needed to be added into the budget. And then we have our ESTR positions, which are moving from the grant to the general fund in FY24. We have 3.1 FTEs of family liaisons. We have seven floating paras. We have two MLE interpreter translators, a school counselor, and a multilingual adjustment counselor. And then we have our school-based positions, a restorative support program coordinator at the high school, a community engagement specialist at Next Wave Full Circle. Many in the council may recall that we had a transition of our security positions at the high school to these community engagement specialist positions with with great results. So this is an expansion of that to Next Wave Full Circle. ELS, excuse me, ESL specialist at Argenziano and Next Wave, and grade five teachers at the Brown and the Healy. In our central offices, we've added an assistant superintendent of operations, a chief personnel officer, and a director of basic needs and housing. With this slide, the next slide is our funding and estimated revenue. So this is looking at our general fund appropriation and all of the funding sources that the district has. Total request or that was passed by school committee is a budget for just over 100 million or 7.8 not 7.89% increase over FY23. Our private state and federal grants are just over 8 million, about half of that is an ESTR funding. Special education circuit breaker, this is part of the reimbursement program that the state created in 2003 to address the extraordinary costs, rising costs of special education. We have about a $750,000 increase in the revenue. This is driven by the Student Opportunity Act and the increase in the inclusion of transportation as part of circuit breaker. And just to add to that, the city of Somerville is a minimum aid district, so we're not seeing some of the larger increases that some some surrounding communities are. But as part of the FY24 budget that is expected to be signed by the governor, there'll be a $60 minimum minimum eight minimum eight amount per pupil, similar to FY23. We have food service revenue. It's one of our revolving accounts. And then we have other revolving account revenue, which is primarily our community schools. And the total school committee funds available for FY24 of over We have one final slide on the budget, and this is related to the continued use of our ESTR funds. So the right-hand slide, the right-hand side of the slide, which breaks down the funding amounts, we're going, we're going to expend about 3.9 million in the current school year, and we expect to have a like amount available for next year. As I mentioned, the grant expires on 0930 '24, so that's going to take us through the first quarter of FY25. We're moving 14.1 FTEs over, as I've mentioned, as part of this budget discussion. What's remaining on ESTR, we have contracts that we would expect to move over in FY25. These include embedded counseling contracts, such as Neighborhood House, Home for Little Wanderers, and Riverside. We have working on the Working on Womanhood program at the high school and Becoming a Man at Winter Hill. And there's also funding available for tutoring programs. So as the ESTR three went through a whole community process, was voted on by school committee, part of the set aside of that original grant amount of the 8.3 million was a million for tutoring programs to deal with learning loss. We have 29 positions that will remain under ESTR for FY24. Those include a sped academic evaluator, a sped humanities inclusion teacher, an AIM kindergarten teacher, an ESL literacy specialist, an MLE curriculum instruction specialist, math and reading interventionists, a district-wide equity coach, a dean of students, and an adjustment counselor. And with that, I turn it back over to the superintendent.
Thank you. We're incredibly fortunate in Somerville to live in a community with a wealth of community organizations, higher ed institutions, philanthropic groups, government agencies, that help us to effectively serve our students and our families. Somerville and SPS are part of a children's cabinet, and in that work, we're often reminded that 70% of our students' waking time is happens outside of school. So when you take that birth to 18, so much of our kids' lives are happening outside of SPS schools and classrooms. But the challenges that they face in those in their lives outside of school, they come into our schools, they come into our educators' classrooms, and it is through work and partnership with these groups that we aim to to address those needs and support our students beyond just the budget that we're presenting here tonight. I just want to close by saying, this budget, I believe, represents a real unwavering commitment to our youth. I'm a parent of a kindergartner and a third grader at the West Somerville, and I'm really proud of the work that this team has done, that Mr. Gorski and school committee have done to to propose and make these investments and allow our students to really ensure that they are successful in school, that they're supported, and that they develop into lifelong learners. I'm proud of the special education investments, the investments in our multilingual learners, to make sure that they have what they need. I'm proud of the out-of-school time investments that we're continuing to make and that I know the council has been very supportive of. We need to make sure our students have access to those enriching opportunities that students and and more well-off families know that they have and have access to. And I'm proud And I'm proud of the continued focus that I believe this budget shows in our commitment to equity and ensuring that students have what they need to succeed when they come to school. This is a budget that was put together over a long period of time with a lot of intentionality, but always with our families and our students at the center. I believe it reflects our priorities as a community, and I'm thankful to everybody who was involved in the process. I want to thank our school committee, I want to thank the council, President Euan Campan, Mayor Ballantyne, and our incredible executive district leadership team to their commitment to this process. And with that, I will turn it back over to President Euan Campan for any questions from the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone who put this budget together. And before we open it up for questions, I just want to say, Superintendent Curley, you know, this is the last budget that you're going to be presenting to us, so I just want to take this opportunity to thank you from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of the council. You know, you stepped up into this role just during a time of unbelievable challenges. And I think, you know, having for the last half year been on the school committee, I've gotten to see that a little bit more up close than I have in the past, but I know you've just been a truly outstanding public servant, and I'm deeply, deeply thankful on behalf of the council and everyone in Somerville. I saw hands Counselor Wilson, Burnley, and McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. A three to Dr. Curley. I'll just echo your comments there. I know how you and your family have sacrificed here during the past year to see us through a, wow. Transition years are tough under the best of circumstances, everything you all had to weather. I just, again, I can't thank you enough. The large increase in out-of-district placement costs, could you just speak to that a little, please?
Through you, Mr. President. So that is a statewide imposition by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which sets rates across the board on out-of-district tuition costs for all districts in Massachusetts. And so that 14% rate increase is something that all districts are grappling with. As Mr. Gorski said, it's pretty much unprecedented, and, you know, we are a city fortunate to be able to try to figure out how to manage that kind of a cost increase when many other districts are not. There is some hope that in the governor's supplemental budget, that that may, there may be a hold harmless there that could help districts. But that isn't across the board for out-of-district tuition costs for all districts in the Commonwealth.
Through the president, thank you for that explanation. Three to Dr. Curley. It's great to see the increase in special education funding. I know there's been some alarm among SPS families around the restructuring of the resource room teachers. I understand that you're doing this budget in a more transparent way this year, and that could be part of the factor in this. Could you please talk a little about just the rationale behind this new approach with the resource room teachers?
Thank you for that, through you, Mr. President. So, yeah, as I said somewhere in the remarks, this is, it's a $2 million increase in our overall special education budget. But we do, in any given year, see enrollment trends, particularly as eighth graders and our K8s graduate to the high school. Certain students that were served by resource room teachers move schools or move on to the high school. And what we did this year was try to really look at the caseloads across all schools and make sure that resource room teachers who do an incredible amount of work, and especially in the difficult labor market that we're facing in education, have taken on quite a lot, that their caseloads were roughly equitable and well below the caps that are in the contract that we have with the SEU. In doing that, we did not reduce any positions, but we did move staff or shift some staff from school-based to district-wide to try to address concerns or shifts in enrollment that we're seeing at the district level. But again, from the viewpoint of the whole system and not just particular schools or individuals. And I will be the first to recognize that that can sometimes be very difficult for particular school communities. They develop relationships with incredible staff, and it can be hard to hear that maybe that person maybe needs to shift to another school. But that's something that I think in the past was sort of done a little bit behind the scenes, and we wanted to kind of be clear with the community, with our educators, with our families, of why we're doing it and the reason behind it, and really that it is to meet an equitable need in shifts in enrollment that we see in any given year across the district.
And finally, through the president, to Dr. Curley. The half million we're all so excited about for out-of-school time, knowing the challenges we're faced with hiring, is it safe to assume that most of this funding is going to go to external providers, and do we anticipate this increasing our capacity?
Through you, Mr. President. I think it's a mix. So we want to invest in strategies to ensure that we build up our community school staff. We know we have chronic wait lists at certain schools every year. I know you all get those emails. There is, you know, and as in many sectors right now, there is a shortage in staff working in these roles. But we want to make sure that, on the community school side, we do whatever we can to fill vacancies. We have 24 vacancies in community schools right now. As we fill those vacancies, we will be taking students off the waitlist, ensuring that particularly younger students, K3s, are served through community schools. But we also want to invest in proven partners and outside providers that serve youth, so that investments in calculus project that have been proven to support our students and ensure they're on track for higher-level high school math are there as well. And I believe it was to Counselor Davis's question, we want to do a mix of after-school, summer. We're even looking potentially at some before care as well. So, you know, again, both the childcare needs and the enrichment needs of our families are incredibly great. This is something that all districts are facing right now of how do you meet that need. We want to do it in partnership with the city. We want to make sure that the teen center continues to be built out, that community partners continue to be built out. But to the extent we can, the district, you know, we have school space and we have an incredible staffing infrastructure with community schools, and we want to make sure that's serving as many families and students as possible.
Mr. President, that's all I had. I'll just add again, my thanks to SPS administration, staff, our excellent school committee. As an SPS parent, I feel like we're in excellent hands here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Burnley, then McLaughlin.
Thank you, through the chair. I'm gonna, we're gonna do a lot of echoing here, I imagine. I want to echo my colleague, Counselor Wilson, in thanks to this incredibly impressive team that's put together a very thorough and detailed presentation that I think really does go through point by point some of the most critical issues facing our community as it pertains to education and our youth. I want to especially just highlight the importance of mental health. That's been talked about a lot here. You know, I personally, I was a student who struggled with anxiety and depression, and I very much appreciate the fact that this school district has put a lot of emphasis over the past few years in monitoring the mental health of our students and trying to put resources to address some of the, quite frankly, really disturbing and upsetting issues that our youth are facing. I don't think, quite frankly, there's a department in the city, or, I mean, in across-the-country departments in general, that have faced more unprecedented stressors than our schools, whether from the public, through circumstance, or by just the needs of our communities that have been hoisted and foisted onto educators and administrators. I also want to just highlight the incredible importance of shifting from a suspension model to an intervention model itself. Personally, my first suspension was when I was in kindergarten. And, you know, there is a lot of data around the impacts that punishment on young children has on their psyches and their path forward. And I personally have experienced the importance of interventions as a means of uplifting children and pointing them in a better direction. So I'm glad to see that highlighted in this report. Kind of focusing down there in terms of actual questions, you mentioned that this budget is a student, I think I'm going to try to quote, "student-based budgeting" was a real important factor in how this budget came together. Can you speak a little bit to how students have a means of giving input into the way that the district is formulating budgets and priorities?
Thank you, Counselor Burnley, and through you, Mr. President. Yeah, I appreciate the framing remarks, and I just want to give a, before I go to the question, a big shout-out to the school-based social workers that we added, the council or educators that we have. I mean, this is where kind of a cumulative budget increase over year has allowed us to be in a much better position than a lot of other districts. So we have great support teams at the school level that ensure that our students feel connected, have relationships, can do one-on-one and small group work. We work also with outside providers and other counseling agencies to supplant as well. And I think that has gotten us into a lot better place, a lot quicker than a lot of other districts that didn't have that investment year over year, or are scrambling to put it in place. On the specific question of students, I think this is an area where we can continue to do a lot more. We have a student council that we meet regularly with. They give input into the budget. We, you know, try to do outreach events to make sure that student voice is represented, particularly in areas like out-of-school time, that what we think is effective is actually getting positive feedback and that our assumptions are correct. But I'll be honest with you, there's a lot more that we could do, and I think bringing more student voice intentionally into the budget process is something that we could do more of. We're meeting now more regularly with student groups and having student voice be part of the school committee. And I've been doing morning meetings before school with students at the high school to try to just take their temperature on anything that they're interested in talking about. It's not always about budget, but usually it's about food. But, you know, those are areas where we're trying to make sure that we are taking some student feedback into account and that what we believe is right is also validated by what students tell us is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just have probably like two more questions, and I appreciate that response. It's not wasted upon me that, you know, I think in the past years, the council has put forward items related to expanding feedback channels to the council itself from youth. I know we have one or two of those channels open, but I'd like to see them expanded moving There is something you mentioned that I really caught my attention, because it was one of my budget priorities that we discussed last year, was making sure that we're not only putting money into after-school programming, which I'm very glad to see that was a priority in this budget, but also trying to expand and look long-term about how that can be before and after school. You know, this is something that I've seen can create a really impactful impression on students, allows them more time in schools, it frees up parents who may have to work early. Can you speak about how, you mentioned, like, we're starting to plant the seeds of that?
Yeah. Thank you, through you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is an area we had done a good bit of work in pre-pandemic with the BOX program, mostly stipending often school staff, PE staff, that are already in early to help support students to be there earlier. It is, it fell off, frankly, it's been challenged to kind of build back up. Part of what we're seeing and part of the, you know, bigger challenge here with overall staffing and just recovery is that our staff are, you know, they're both super stretched themselves and dealing with their own challenges, and, you know, there's a bit of like a collective action problem. They often need the childcare coverage to allow them to be in to support our students in either before school or after school. We've partnered with a group called Spring Board to try to extend early literacy into after school. And, you know, it's been a challenge to recruit staff, even with generous stipends, because, you know, the work is so hard already. And so part of it is like, what can we do? How can we incentivize staff if they're willing and able to help support that need that we know is there before school and after school? But when rightfully that need isn't there, or that demand or the ability of staff to do it isn't there, then we try to look to outside partners to support that need. And that's what we're trying to balance in this investment of the out-of-school time budget.
Thank you, and I'll actually withhold any more questions and follow-up offline.
Excellent. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. No questions, but I just want to reiterate my appreciation for Jeff Curley, who was a person that I called very often when I was a president of the city council. I'm sure you are very happy to be stepping down from this position, as I was happy to step down from my position. So now we can just go back to talking about traffic on Otis Street. So thank you very much for all your service.
I look forward to it.
Yeah. I'll call you tomorrow. Thank you.
I'll ask Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
I have just a brief question. So in the Winter Hill, you're going to add three additional classrooms. Sorry, I had to ask. Are we creating these spaces, like, are we going to have physical, three additional physical classrooms?
Through you, Mr. President. We are going to have three additional physical classrooms. It requires a real rejiggering of that space, including moving more single-office staff into creative areas, such as old showers and locker rooms. But we have worked with the school team to make sure, and the educators, to make sure that they feel it's workable. We did investigate leasing the St. Anne's space, and the team felt as though that space, which is, has not been occupied for quite a long time, is not AB accessible, that having a split campus at this point would be, it would be a bigger challenge than trying to figure out how to make three more classrooms in the Winter Hill. But as we've talked about in school committee, this is really, this is it for space. There's no more space to be utilized in that school. And the challenge and the reason we're adding the three classrooms is that growth in autism programming at the school. And those are classrooms that not only have important sensory needs, but also have lower student-to-staff ratios. And so you may have four, five students in a classroom compared to, you know, 18 or 20 in a generally classroom. And so it has, we have had to get very creative with space in the Winter Hill, and the team, I can't say enough of the leadership team in that school and the school culture of the educators in that school. They have been incredibly flexible and resourceful, and we've asked them to do that one more time, but, so we're going to make it work next year, but that all space in that school is fully utilized.
And I ask partially, because as a chair of the school building committee, and also, you know, we have to remember, the city is the keeper of our buildings, so I want to make sure we have the right support. I want to just reiterate that if we are putting these classrooms in lockers or old showers, that we think of the echoing and what our autistic children and what that does. And sorry, I'm overstepping, so I'm going to step back. And you're right, I met one of your staff in an event outside, and she educated me so much about the needs, their space needs and stuff, so they are truly a wonderful community. And I want to thank you for increasing the parent English classes. We're seeing a demand on that. I always, when it comes to language, I think we can do so much more. I think I've reiterated, I wish we have a more robust language program, but that's not the, this is a budget meeting. not the, this is a budget meeting. And I also want to just say how wonderful and amazing your adjustment counselors are. And as I noted earlier, sometimes our youth mental health crisis, we're all learning, all the professionals, everybody, and I can't believe how resourceful they are. So kudos to them in this crisis and to our school systems to be proactive. I didn't realize the Bridge Program, for example, was built three years ago. So thank you for that.
So I have two questions. As you all know, a top priority for all of us in government has to do with housing instability. And earlier tonight, you know, we were joined by several dozen community members who were here urging us to do everything we possibly can on housing instability. Now, I know, you know, these issues often manifest really acutely in the schools, and I know that there are really incredible staff and resources dedicated to that. And I wonder if you could just tell us a little bit about some of the resources in the schools for unhoused students, for families with housing instability, and how the district is able to support those, and whether there's a way that we can support those efforts further.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, as mentioned, we've built up a great team under Regina Bertoldo, Jen Ochoa, to really work closely with our students experiencing homelessness, to make sure that their transportation needs are met, that their food needs are met, that they can have access to after-school, which can be very logistically complicated for students who, you know, may have housing outside of the city. They do incredible work. They work very closely with the Office of Housing Stability. You know, but this is, this is a growing challenge that we're seeing at the school level. And Ms. Bertoldo is away right now, but I mean, it might be worth a joint meeting or something where we could talk about ways in which her office partners with other city agencies to support our families, because while we were ahead of the curve in building, in building that department up, it's, you know, a need that we continue to unfortunately see only increasing right now. And it's a two-person department in the schools, and they do amazing work, but it's, it's a challenge, it's a challenge for many of our families.
Thank you for that, and I would certainly welcome that. I'm sure the rest of the council would too. My other question, I get questions semi-frequently on our efforts to create a restorative justice program, particularly at the high school. Can you talk about where we are in those efforts and?
Yeah, thank you. So through you, we signed a contract this year with Suffolk, which does incredible work in restorative justice. And we have been pulling staff in, we've been kind of setting aside time to make sure that, that all, you know, key school teams have access to that training. The response, as we've surveyed, staff has been incredibly strong. The demand has been greater than we were able to serve in this first year, so we're adding to that investment. We're making sure that additional staff at the school level are going to be supported and going to be trained up. We're building out a program at the high school that would, you know, provide a consistent place for restorative in-school suspension. So in the past, if you had an in-school suspension, you were, there was like a teacher assigned to be in that room in one period, and then that would switch over to another teacher in another period. We're trying to make sure that there is a consistency and an intentionality in how we support students in, in, in in-school suspension. And I have to give a little bit of credit, which I don't often do, to the state, which has kind of moved in a progressive direction in pushing districts to make sure that, that they seek alternative remedies to suspension. So we were lucky to kind of, again, be a little bit ahead of the curve, having the relationship with Suffolk and having the restorative justice program already in place. But this is something that all districts are going to have to be working towards, that you can't just kind of have the old model where you, you know, a school would just try to put a student out for a two-day emergency removal, that you're offering supports in keeping students in school. And to the attendance data and to the chronic absenteeism that we're seeing, like, we have to keep kids in school. Like, we have so much work to do, we have so much of a recovery to keep undergoing, that, you know, being able to do that and with a restorative justice frame is just, is just critical, and it can't just be some staff. It has to be all of our staff that have that mindset and have that approach.
Thank you very much for that. And if there are ways that we as a council can support those efforts, please continue to reach out. And with that, let's refer this item to the finance committee.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. President.
Excellent. Well, thank you all again. We will resume on Monday night. We have a committee meeting at 6:00 and a public hearing at 7:30. And I look forward to the next month. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.